Hello Jim, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing okay, thank you.
At least the rain went away.
Did it? I thought I heard it pouring down a few moments ago again.
Really? Maybe it is.
Hello Chief Johnson, how are you doing?
I'm good Mayor Protim Baldwin, how about you?
I'm doing okay, you have my deepest sympathy in the past of your father.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, appreciate that.
Hey Mayor Protim Baldwin, hey Mayor Nas.
Hello.
Hello there Ms. Bullock, how are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm okay, thank you.
Hey Shorty.
Hi Cass.
Evening Kyle.
Good evening Jim, good evening Pamela.
Hello there Kyle, how are you doing?
I'm good, good.
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 Hey Jim.
Hi Michael, how are you doing?
Pamela, I am well, how are you?
Doing okay, thank you.
Got to get my screen set up so I can look at the camera.
Okay.
Not cooperating.
You guys give me a few minutes, we were having some of the panelists that need to be on. They're having a little issues logging on, just give me a few seconds.
Sure.
Thank you.
Evening John.
Hi John, how are you doing?
John, can you hear us?
Can I do a sound check, can anyone hear me?
Now we can hear you.
There we go, gotcha.
Yeah, hello John, how are you doing?
This is worrisome.
Teresa, you should be able to share your screen now, are you able to get that?
I don't see that option.
It's open to anybody, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay.
Try one more time.
Yes normally, the options normally at the very bottom and I don't see it.
So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and that way you might be able to see it, how about that? So do you see it at the bottom now?
I don't.
Mayor, me and Teresa will talk offline if you want to go ahead and start the meeting.
Is Chris on? I don't see him.
Chris is on, yes Chris is on.
Okay. Alright, well then in that case I will call and order the regular meeting of the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for Monday, November 22, 2021. And as is our custom, we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you, Jay would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly, my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Jay.
Thank you Mayor.
First item in the agenda would be to adopt or amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, the agenda has been adopted. The first item, the manager updates, Chris?
Yes sir Mayor, good evening everybody, hope everyone is doing well this evening. The, a few updates I have for y'all this evening, obviously, no surprise that they sent around our water update. And so, I just want to let everybody know that town staff is continuing to work with Greensboro and the state, trying to get the latest information about the 14 dioxide exceedance in Greensboro. We continue to see levels go up. We unfortunately did not get results today. Meritech, who is our sample site that tests our samples, continues to have issues with their testing equipment for whatever reason. So we were hopeful to have sample results today. I was made aware this afternoon, the estimate is over the weekend and they're hopeful that those will come in tomorrow. We've looked at backup sites. As you might imagine, rush orders are not cheap and not many people actually test for 14 dioxide. So shipping something to California would not likely be as expedient as just waiting for Meritech to get their systems corrected. So, we continue to keep a good pulse on that. We know that the public is anxious to see our water levels restored back to quote-unquote "normal", staff is as well and we're continuing to work diligently to figure out how we can do the best to correct that. I know, I think Corey, Adam and myself all had conversations with Greensboro today. I think productive conversations, but I would say not as fruitful as we would like simply because the water is not yet restored back to normal levels. So we continue to discuss that. One other thing that we had at the last meeting was the Chatham Marketplace. We've had a number of questions. We've actually tested Chatham Marketplace's water to determine how their treatment system filters out 14 dioxide. That's part of the samples that we're hopeful that, we're hopeful to have back today. So we anticipate to have those back tomorrow. I've been working with Evan over at the marketplace and we're looking to have the RO filling station with the town set up. In the coming days, we're hopeful that with the December bill, we'll send out a, basically a coupon code to our customers, which they can provide to Chatham Marketplace. And so when they fill up, they'll pay a per gallon or, they'll go up there and there'll be a charge per gallon and the coupon code will override it, it'll make it free to the customer and basically put that on a charge account of the town that will be invoiced directly to us. So, again our customers won't have any expense, but they wanted to bring their own vessel and we provided a coupon code that we intend to include with the bill this month. And so once that's green lighted, we'll provide that, I'm gonna do a joint press release between Chatham Marketplace and the town, kind of announcing that, the mechanics of it. And so we anticipate to have that here in the next couple of days. As the billing cycle closes out, we're doing meter reading today. Hopefully have that ready to go, maybe as early as next week. On the other update that I had, or two other days, excuse me, one on the agenda. We've added a new business number four, so water related as well. This is for the low-income household water assistance program. This is an effort that we're working with Chatham County DSS to provide to our at-risk customers so they continue to pay their water bill. Obviously the water rates went up this year, that's been much discussed. We find that those increases were justified and necessary, but we certainly understand that people sometimes struggle to pay their water bills. So, the county will handle the eligibility requirements for that and I'll talk further about that as we get to that agenda item. But did want to alert the general public that there is a revised agenda and a new business number two, number four. Not to confuse them too much. And then, last update I have is on the Public Information Officer, obviously much discussed with the water stuff. We've closed the job ad with the first section, we've got four applications so far. We'll be going through those with staff, determining if there's any candidates there we need to, or would like to interview. If not, or if there's not enough that we'd like to interview, we'll certainly re-advertise that position, hope to have someone in place soon. We know that the public information is paramount to our, not only to our citizens, residents and customer base, but especially in times like this where we have water issues and concerns. Being utmost responsive to that is really important to us. So, this position will certainly assist me, most importantly, as I'm the one who usually is the caretaker of that, provide someone else the ability just to push information about 24/7, so that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you Chris. Mayor, items, I just have a couple. One, last night was the tree lighting ceremony downtown and it was really a wonderful event. It was a joy to see the downtown filled with people of all ages, meeting old friends, making new friends and lots of children. I want to thank Pam Falk and the PBA for their work and commend our police department, Shorty, on the excellent way they handled the road closures and the direction of traffic. There were a lot of people there and it could have been a mess and it flowed very smoothly, so thank you for that. At the tree lighting, I made a few remarks and then had the real honor and privilege of introducing the incoming mayor Cindy Perry. And she and I, at her recommendation, played a little fun game with the kids that were in the audience by alternately asking them questions about whether they'd been naughty or nice and whether they'd been treating their brothers and sisters right and doing their chores and all that sort of thing, so it was great fun. When Santa was introduced and the tree was lit and it was really, really quite beautiful. Snow fell, not the real stuff thankfully, but it sure looked like snow. And it was just a beautiful and inspiring event. And so, the other thing I might mention is that, for the first time in a long time in my memory, I believe almost every business that was in downtown was open during the tree lighting ceremony last night. And I know they were doing a lot of business, so that was really good to see. The only, the second thing I wanted to do, this is, will be my last board meeting as mayor before the transition takes place on December 13th. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to thank the commissioners. You have been a wonderful group to work with. And I think it's probably not widely understood how hard you all work in not only preparing for these board meetings, but also in-between board meetings. And many of the items and issues that come before this board are very complex and require the commissioners to be conversant with a wide range of issues and even disciplines. And I can only say that this board has without fail always made decisions that are best for the town and in the short and long term. And so I salute you all for the work that you've done. It's really amazing and much appreciated. So that's the, that's all I have with mayor updates. So commissioner updates, Commissioner Farrell?
Other than joining the numerous people downtown last night, the tree lighting was a great success and also I'd like to commend you Mayor Nas for the years and your service also. You have been a great leader, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schiff?
Yes, thank you. The, let me see where I'm at, so I was able to attend the Chatham Chamber of Commerce annual meeting last Wednesday. That was a really great event and a lot of Pittsboro's own honor there and represented there. I wanted to thank Chris too for getting the, I had reached out to him sometime earlier this summer about the flagpole at Town Hall and asked if we could get it repaired. And instead of just doing that, he, you know, moved it out by the road where it's really visible. Really nice flagpole out there, so just appreciate him going above and beyond on that. And it's also great to see the paving happening around town, a lot of those roads that have been impacted by the detour, so that's really good to see. And then, just, yeah, I did want to say too, Mayor Nas, Commissioner Fiocco, like appreciate all you've done on this board and all the time you've put in. I don't think anyone will ever know the extent of that time and the impact, so appreciate what you did and we'll try and carry on.
Thank you. Commissioner Fiocco?
Thank you. It's truly been an honor to serve the citizens of Pittsboro and we've served together the four, five of us, about four of us for quite many years and of course Jim and Kyle have come on. And I've enjoyed the tasks that we have tackled in pursuit of a greater Pittsboro. So I'm happy to have been a part of that team. Tomorrow night, there is a mixer at the Postal Seafood Restaurant for Main Street Pittsboro to give everybody another update. And I attended the tree lighting ceremony last night and it was fabulous, I truly enjoyed it. But fair warning, if you do show up early, you will be put to work. Going that the hard way. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protim Baldwin?
No, I don't have anything at this time, but I certainly do want to say, Mayor Nas, I certainly appreciate your leadership. You've grown, you've shown us great knowledge, you've shown us, given us a lot over these few, over these years. I have certainly enjoyed and learned a lot from you as mayor. And I really do, again, appreciate all that you've done, that you've served on numerous task forces, you've led different things in reference to the town of Pittsboro. And I know you've been a dedicated individual and I certainly will miss you, but you can certainly always provide additional leadership and expertise in many ways. And Commissioner Fiocco, I'd like to take this time to say that you have shown great leadership also and given us great knowledge, were able to share a lot of knowledge with this particular board. You are a trustworthy individual with impeccable character, honest, integrity to the best. And I have to say, I certainly enjoyed working with you over this time period. There have been a lot of things us as a Board of Commissioners have had to look at and review and you've always given us expert knowledge on that. And I again say, I appreciate that and both of you have impeccable, again I say impeccable, character. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thank you. The, let me see where I'm at, so I was able to attend the Chatham Chamber of Commerce annual meeting last Wednesday. That was a really great event and a lot of Pittsboro's own honor there and represented there. I wanted to thank Chris too for getting the, I had reached out to him sometime earlier this summer about the flagpole at Town Hall and asked if we could get it repaired. And instead of just doing that, he, you know, moved it out by the road where it's really visible. Really nice flagpole out there, so just appreciate him going above and beyond on that. And it's also great to see the paving happening around town, a lot of those roads that have been impacted by the detour, so that's really good to see. And then, just, yeah, I did want to say too, Mayor Nas, Commissioner Fiocco, like appreciate all you've done on this board and all the time you've put in. I don't think anyone will ever know the extent of that time and the impact, so appreciate what you did and we'll try and carry on.
Thank you. Commissioner Fiocco?
Thank you. It's truly been an honor to serve the citizens of Pittsboro and we've served together the four, five of us, about four of us for quite many years and of course Jim and Kyle have come on. And I've enjoyed the tasks that we have tackled in pursuit of a greater Pittsboro. So I'm happy to have been a part of that team. Tomorrow night, there is a mixer at the Postal Seafood Restaurant for Main Street Pittsboro to give everybody another update. And I attended the tree lighting ceremony last night and it was fabulous, I truly enjoyed it. But fair warning, if you do show up early, you will be put to work. Going that the hard way. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protim Baldwin?
No, I don't have anything at this time, but I certainly do want to say, Mayor Nas, I certainly appreciate your leadership. You've grown, you've shown us great knowledge, you've shown us, given us a lot over these few, over these years. I have certainly enjoyed and learned a lot from you as mayor. And I really do, again, appreciate all that you've done, that you've served on numerous task forces, you've led different things in reference to the town of Pittsboro. And I know you've been a dedicated individual and I certainly will miss you, but you can certainly always provide additional leadership and expertise in many ways. And Commissioner Fiocco, I'd like to take this time to say that you have shown great leadership also and given us great knowledge, were able to share a lot of knowledge with this particular board. You are a trustworthy individual with impeccable character, honest, integrity to the best. And I have to say, I certainly enjoyed working with you over this time period. There have been a lot of things us as a Board of Commissioners have had to look at and review and you've always given us expert knowledge on that. And I again say, I appreciate that and both of you have impeccable, again I say impeccable, character. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thank you. The climate change advise, the Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee presented their annual report to the county commissioners on November 1st. And they have circulated a draft of 10 policy and action recommendations, some of which were late, as I mentioned, relate to land use and I think will be of interest to town staff. I will circulate that to the board and staff after tonight's meeting. I understand that they're going to be presenting those 10 recommendations to the county Board of Commissioners on December 20th. And I would like to echo many of the praises and thanks to Mayor Nas and Commissioner Fiocco. Mayor Nas in particular, I think that you really rose to the challenge during this pandemic and have done us very, very well. Thank you. Commissioner Fiocco, your expertise in planning and land use and all of the mechanisms that are involved with those in-depth detailed policies, I'm grateful for that and thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you John. The next matter is citizen matters and I would like us to follow the protocol of on public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And beyond that, I would like to have us, we've all over the last two weeks received a number of communications, particularly on the affordable housing element and on the Northwoods neighborhood. And I would like us to include those comments and those representations in the public record going forward. And I would appreciate the thoughts of the board on doing that.
Mayor, I'm in favor of that, if we can say that, any emails to board@pittsburrownc.gov do that, I think that's the best way to communicate with all of us at the same time, just generally. And, you know, I think we can easily pick up those comments and I think we should.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, dating back to when?
Well since the last meeting, when we closed the public hearing on affordable housing, I would think.
So November 8th for affordable housing, what about, you mentioned Northwoods as well, sir?
Yeah, I know we've had some additional comments and representations, at least the ones that I've read are by and large a repeat of comments and materials that we had received over the last months, actually. And so I would think, I don't know, I think, I would think again, anything that came in after our last meeting.
Okay, so anything received since November 8th will include into the record for tonight's meeting?
Okay. Alright, and so we would go to public comment for items not on the agenda and I'll try to invoke the three-minute rule. Cassie, do we have people scheduled to speak or that have asked to speak on public comment?
No sir, we don't have anyone that has requested to speak.
Alright. Then the next item on the agenda would be the adoption or amendment of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes that were added today and I don't have that number printed out here, but.
I think that's the 17th.
Seventeenth, March 6th of April?
That would be item number three on the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay, I got it, I got it, okay, yes. So move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item three till our next meeting.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item then would be the new business, item number one, which is the Chatham Parkway North alignment. And Chris, do you want to speak to this to begin with?
Sure Mayor. Obviously as the mayor provided a little bit of a prelude with some of the comments we talked about with citizen matters. The Chatham Parkway North alignment has been much discussed with the board for, you know, the landmark dates. Really goes back to the August 23rd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. The board discussed this with DOT at that meeting. I think everyone agrees that it was clear that the board with the information provided at that time was requesting an alternative eight. The next day I spoke with Patrick Norman with NC DOT. As part of that conversation, he asked me for a formal letter from the town requesting the review of an alternative eight. Chatham Parkway North to date had already had seven reviews or seven alternative scenarios developed. Six prior to the public hearing last January of January 2021. Then a seventh that was developed based on the feedback from the Northwoods neighborhood. And then it was requested that an eighth be looked at. Certainly there's been a lot of conversation amongst staff, DOT, the Board of Commissioners, the public at large about how to proceed forward with this. And so, what we have for you this evening, DOT sent a letter. There's information to the board on September 15th of 2021 that was provided to the mayor in a meeting with DOT officials. That was then subsequently provided to the Board of Commissioners. And then we received a letter from Patrick Norman on November 5th, 2021, basically providing a what was intended to be a comprehensive update or understanding of where DOT stood with the alignment and considerations that the Board of Commissioners or any decision-maker may wish to include in their deliberation as a consider accepting alternative six, which was considered to be preferential by DOT over the alternative seven that they looked at. And then also we discussed an alternative at number eight for a scenario to be developed for what we called the horseshoe route, for how it was shaped through two streams that were depicted on the screen when we looked at that on August 23rd. So that as some background for tonight of simply saying, DOT has provided us a deadline of December 1st to provide something in writing to them requesting either the acceptance of alternative six or the request to review alternative eight. Certainly the town can choose not to act and quote-unquote "pocket veto" a decision. If there is no, if there's no decision made by the board, it is my understanding that DOT will just proceed forward alternative six. So the board need not necessarily absolutely provide a vote, but what you're being requested for tonight, if the board wishes to do so, is to either vote to accept alternative six or vote to request that DOT consider scenario eight. And basically the direction of that vote is to direct me to prepare a letter to DOT memorializing what your vote was to DOT.
a little bit and then provided some materials in terms of potential impacts if we switched over to eight and that was shared with the, with the commissioners. But it seemed to me, at least, that the board was pretty firm in wanting a full study of eight. So open the floor for discussion and whether or not I'm reading that correctly.
Mayor Nass, as far as I'm concerned, yes, that was what the decision of the board was to look at then alternative number eight.
Yes. Anything else? It seemed to me unless the board has thought through this and come to some other decision, I, I would entertain a motion to direct the town manager to supply a letter to DOT asking them to formally study and, and do a study on the horseshoe route or alternative eight.
Before we.
Just further discussion? Yes, go ahead, Kyle.
I'll, I'll second for, for discussion.
All right.
And I just wanted to see, I didn't see anything in the letter from, from Patrick Norman about, I, I think obviously we were clear in our August meeting that that was the desire. And I think it's disappointing that, that DOT didn't do it and in way of a technicality. I, I don't see anything in, in Mr. Norman's letter about consequences to evaluating that alternative in terms of lost time or, or lost money or increased, you know, cost or anything related to evaluating that alternative. Is there any, uh, in, any downside to doing that?
Well, the materials that were provided by DOT talked about their potential for delay and the potential for having to go back to the Corps of Engineers and get approval again. And the uncertain, if we will, situation concerning funding at DOT looking out into the, into the future. And I had I had had the town staff, I take that little package that they outlined that Ed and asked that that be hand delivered to the commissioners the same way that the packets are. But I found out only recently that many of you at least did not get that. And so I asked Chris to put that together and to get it out to you electronically. You know, so I think that there, you know, that there are some issues there that, that could that could be to consider. DOT asked that, you know, the board be fully informed before they made a final decision. Just seemed to me that that this board was pretty firm on wanting a formal study of the route eight. And what we've really done is lost the period between the end of August and now in getting that accomplished. And I suppose some of that might be our fault and some of theirs, but at any rate, that's the way I see it.
Okay, yeah, I think you ready? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, yeah. I, well, I agree that I reviewed the recording, which, you know, was great to have at our fingertips. So I think everybody was in agreement to do the study. I think DOT was prepared to do a study and was looking for some final, I think, I think the quote was send me something was what I think Patrick said. And I think Chris trying to get clarification on what was actually being requested did so and said he wanted to be clear so he could communicate, which Chris is very good at doing. That he would send an email. So I subsequently have learned that the email did not go out at the request of DOT to have further conversations. But I, you know, I regret that we've lost this time. I think the study would be 60 to 90 days. And I think that could be done by now. And, and I think, you know, there would be more acceptance of a resolution to the matter. Because honestly, I will say that Route Six, alternate six is a very good option given the obstacles and the various demands of such a route. I think it's very surgical in going through the neighborhood, but nonetheless, it goes through the neighborhood. And so I think it's legitimate to request that, is there a plan that works that doesn't go through the neighborhood? So that's what I think we, we asked for. And let us not forget that this route, this road has far greater implications for our community. We are, one of our goals is to get traffic out of downtown. And every day that it is delayed being implemented, we are only growing and getting more congestion downtown. So if we do decide to request DOT to do alternate eight, I would also like to ask them to do it as quickly as possible. And if they could agree to a 60 to 90 day turnaround time, I think that would, would be an appropriate request from us as well.
I would also ask that once they receive this letter from us, since, since we were very clear last time and I guess it wasn't clear enough, that they would also let us know of any potential schedule or, or cost implications of, of even doing this study. So we're looking forward to that. I, I think we're dealing with this far, far too late in the game. And, you know, if we look ahead on the 2011 against the transportation plan, it shows, for example, Ex Campbell Road connecting from its current position to Chatham Parkway, which will impact a lot of houses. It shows 15501 connecting to Lorax Lane. Lorax, it shows industrial park connecting to a new road. There, there's a lot of these conflicts in, in our future. And this timeline in the project is far too late to, to deal with them. And so a, as I've said before, we need to get ahead of these as, as they're coming up and not let any of these get, get to this point, or at least be sure of all of our alternatives and consequences of, of those actions when we, when we are this late in the, in the planning process.
Yes, I agree also with that too, because even like Michael said, is if there's any way we can rush this timeframe up, that's the concern of mine is we can just, about losing any funding and all, if we can get this reported in a little quicker. I feel like they kind of dropped a bomb since August.
And Commissioner Farrell, to that end and, and to the other commissioners, your comments. I do think the conversation has shifted. I don't think it's, it's been sort of a moving target. Obviously, there's a lot of forces moving at DOT right now. They've, they've delayed prioritization for the next step. So I, I think there's a lot of funding concerns about where this is going to go. And so I think some of my initial conversations I had with DOT after the August 23rd meeting, I think they thought some of it would get kind of worked out in terms of there'd be better clarity. But I think, like most of us experience, when you try to put something into writing and say, you know, this is a scenario or this is a likely externality of your impact. DOT struggled to reduce that to writing to say, you know, absolutely, there will be a delay. Absolutely, there will be a cost increase. I think that, that was some of the staff and certainly the board and the general public were waiting on from DOT. But I do think in, in their defense, some of this has been a moving target on their end as they get better information about the state budget and other funding mechanisms that they deal with. So I think it's, it, it's an obvious and, and not, you know, and, and very defensible thing to say, I wish we had done this in, in August and we'd already have the, the answer for alternative eight 60 or 90 days from then. So certainly I can, in any letter I prepare, I can certainly ask the DOT to, to turn around with the utmost quickness, certainly ask them about, you know, any, any delays if an alternative eight is selected. Because I do think it's important to note with this decision, if, if alternative eight is, is what the board desires to be requested, that decision does not mean alternative eight will get built. It just simply basically punts the decision from today of choosing a, a, an alternative scenario that the board can either opt in the alternative six today or we can add an alternative scenario to the complement of scenarios, which would, would then be eight scenarios to choose from. And so I think to Commissioner Sip's comment about asking, you know, what would alternative eight provide? That's really what this 60 to 90 day analysis was likely going to provide. It's going to look at the route. It's going to look at, you know, is the route lengthier? Are there more property impacts? Are there environmental impacts? And so that's what the analysis report deliverable really will be. And so I think it's important to understand that even if we look at alternative eight, alternative six, as, as Commissioner Fiocco kind of offered, you know, has tried to be as surgical as it can. Alternative eight may not work. But certainly it's been identified as a potential solution to, to work around the Northwoods neighborhood. And so if it can, I think this board's interested in seeing that. That's the thing. It's what I'm, I'm gathering from the commentary. So I, I, I felt like that was necessary to, to make known that basically the decision of, of selecting a route is not being made tonight if we request alternative eight. It's simply saying, we would like another option to consider when we do have to make that decision. And hopefully that's in the next 60 to 90 days.
Right. Agreed. And, and I don't think it takes a, a very trained eye to understand that alternative eight is longer and longer will cost more money. And so that's where I think this analysis could be done relatively quickly by professionals who also know about the environmental impacts and, and the slope of the land and, and things like that. And would, would be able to provide to us how, how much more money alternative eight is and, and any other impacts. So I would, I would hope that can come quickly and, and just say again, I'm sorry, it's not here now. So.
Well, there's no further discussion. We have a motion in the second to authorize the town manager to provide a letter to the Department of Transportation asking them to do a, launch a formal study of alternative route eight and to include in that letter the points that were made during this discussion period going forward. So that motion is on the table and has been seconded. I guess I would ask for the ayes and nays. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Be opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I have that letter prepared and sent out this week.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, commissioners. The next item is the Chatham Park Affordable Housing Additional Element. And Chris, I don't know who is, anyone is presenting on this?
I'll start with it. Just kind of provide a little bit of, of, of background. Again.
They're all like this.
Mr. Bullock, your mic is hot, just so you know.
Thank you.
Sir. I think you took care of it. So this item is a Chatham, Chatham Park Affordable Housing Additional Element. This is the, the final element in, in the, under the Chatham Park PDD master plan required the adoption of 12 elements. And so this is the, the 12th and final one up for consideration by the board. As, as we've, we've come to so far, this is, this is in year four of the review of this in some shape or manner, we've had the Affordable Housing Task Force provide review of this. We've had other agencies provide review of this. There was a bit of a gap between 2017 and then this year with some of those initiatives, but the commentary has remained largely the same. The board had a public hearing back in October. We continued that public hearing November 8th. That's when it was closed. Board had a workshop to discuss this as recently as November 10th of this month. Couple of weeks ago, at that workshop, the board discussed the element with local agency stakeholders, as I would refer to them as, be Chatham Habitat, the COG, Chatham County Policy Analyst. And so the board has strived to review this thoroughly, provide commentary. Elements can be amended over time. But I think it's everyone's best interest to have them as correct as possible when you adopt them. I think we could all can agree to that. And so what you have before you this evening is, is the, the most recent affordable housing plan element. I would note that Chatham Park updated provisions of this. Certainly, we had a public hearing on the document. We had the workshop. And so through that and other conversations, as, as I understand, Chatham Park has made some adjustments to this. That was submitted to the town last week and posted to the town website. That is what's in the packet this evening for this agenda item. And so there are a, a number of adjustments, primarily, I think the most obvious adjustment is the increase in the percentages of affordable housing to be provided by Chatham Park. I should say affordable and workforce housing. I'm, I'm combining the terms for my own convenience. But is the, the increase in numbers from 5% up to seven and a half percent. So again, they've, they've come a long way since 2017 and when it was 1%. We certainly have heard a fair number of comment, comments about percentages in, in excess of seven and a half percent. But the element that you have before you this evening includes that. There have been a couple of other provision changes, but I think the primary difference between the first version you saw back at your public hearing last month of the most recent version and then the one we got last week is really the percentage increase. I, I know Mr. Chuck Smith's on the call this evening. I'm sure he's from Chatham Park can speak to that. But in terms of just kind of where we stand, as a general overview, happy to answer any questions you may have. And I'm sure there'll be more questions as we kind of go through the document, go through board comments. The staff will be here to assist with that as well.
Discussion by the board?
Well, just like to mention, I think, two other critical things that, that occurred during the latest amendment. And that is the introduction of affordable housing at a level below or 60% and below AMI. And the introduction of the 30-year period for affordability. I think those are pretty important components that have been added.
Just one, one other concept too, that, that we had heard a lot about, and it is the primary difference on the table here is previously it talked about specific amounts of land donation that would count for specific numbers of affordable housing. And we've really eliminated that concept altogether. There is no chart anymore for land donation and, and what it's equivalent to. And the requirement now is that the Chatham Park investors would need to come with a approved plan for a specific site that shows how many units can be built on that site. And then they would work with us for six years to ensure that that is built. And, and then they. So there's no specific number of land required per units. They would need to show an actual location and an actual plan for that location with the type of units and, and how long they'd be affordable for and all those details in order to receive credit against the.
I'll, I'll mention that, that's a great addition that I over I didn't include. But a, a just minor correction, you said bring an approved plan. No, submit to the town so that the town can approve the plan. So that means that all of the land use issues in Chatham Park, all the other additional elements have to be satisfied in order for that unit to be acknowledged as a possibility and ultimately to be put on the ground. So it deals with tree preservation. It deals with stormwater management. It deals with all those things that tend to really eat up a lot of land so, so that a donation of an acre doesn't equal X amount of units. So this will ensure the number of units desired or credit can actually occur.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, maybe two, just some clarification. I've had numerous emails and calls today regarding the 2.5% of annual ad lorm taxes. I think there's numerous of people in the community that says Chatham Park is raising town taxes two and a half percent. I just want to make sure that we have this on the record, that this is not a town tax. It is a tax on the properties in Chatham. tax. It is a tax on the properties in Chatham Park. If Mr. Messick needs to comment anything on that to make sure that, that John Doe living on Main Street Pittsburgh is not going to be charged two and a half percent and the lorm taxes on his real property.
Mr. Farrell, I can, I'm not Mr. Messick, but I can answer that question. The, the way that that language is, is devised is that it's two and a half percent of the ad valorem, what I would call burden to Chatham Park. So if you look at the entirety of our ad valorem portfolio, which include everyone in town, anyone in the corporate limits, all their, all their property values combined together. The way this element is constructed is that it's two and a half percent of the ad valorem revenue within the boundaries of Chatham Park. So if you look at Chatham Park as a as a full build out, and then I've, I've got some math. It's been discussed. It's a seven point four billion dollar value project at build out. And so if you, if you break that down that the ad valorem burden at full build out of Chatham Park is what over thirty two million dollars. Two and a half percent of that is just over eight hundred thousand dollars. It's eight hundred and one thousand dollars and change. So that is what would be going into a fund or supporting affordable housing. So it's only using the ad valorem burden of properties within Chatham Park. So if you live on Thompson Street, there's nothing coming out of your taxes that's going towards that unless the Board of Commissioners chooses to allocate money in its annual budget. For instance, this year, you know, we dedicated equivalent to one penny, which is just over seventy six thousand dollars towards affordable housing ventures. If the board chooses to continue to do that, then that would affect, you know, John Doe neighbor on Thompson Street. But with regard to the affordable housing element, it has, it has no tax liability, no tax burden on individuals outside of Chatham Park. It's only those within Chatham Park that are having, the town would then derive its two and a half percent from.
Right. Okay. That's the way I interpreted, but numerous people have called and wanted some clarification on that. And I appreciate that, Chris.
Yes, sir. And we can certainly, ad valorem taxes are not the simplest of concepts in general. So certainly adding another layer of splicing money off of an ad valorem burden certainly brings up some questions. So happy to clarify that.
Okay. One other comment I had on this was within the two years of making this approval on this element is where the town established a nonprofit housing trust. I'm going to use that name since it's in here. And I'll ask you, Chris, how do you feel if staff had, I guess, if staff was to take over this housing trust and then had an advisory board to present it to staff? I mean, I'm just a little a little hesitant about nonprofit organizations handling this, these monies.
Sure. And Commissioner Farrell, to that end, I think staff is here to do whatever you think's best. And so I'll start with that. I would say one of the comments that I had when I, in my review of it, and I figured we'd have a conversation about this this evening. I've been going over the, the latest version is that I would think I would actually recommend that there's a definition added that simply says town. And that the definition of town is the town of Pittsburgh and or any other successor or associated entity like a housing trust. We would, we derive the same statutory authority as a housing trust. Statute one fifty seven, Article one is what dictates housing authorities. And so we have the same, as a, as a local government municipality in North Carolina, we have the same powers and authority provided to us from statute that a housing authority would. There are, there are certainly probably advantages and disadvantages of how someone incorporates a housing authority. And so I think it's, it's probably too simplified to say it'll be one or the other. I think it could be equally plausible that we both do, that the town may have certain things that handles and may delegate some of, some of that operation to a housing authority or trust. So I think as far as the element goes, it would be my preference to stay more generic with the term housing trust and, and basically replace that with town, but define the word town as it could be town or it could be housing trust or a similar type agency or entity that basically handles affordable housing in Pittsburgh. So, so again, I think I'm equally comfortable establishing a housing trust or equally comfortable having the town run it and have my staff and our staff here be the representatives to it and have some sort of board that guides that policy. I think both of them were equally well. I think Chatham Park was looking at kind of a more neutral by having the nonprofit. But again, I think when you look at it in the realm of our operation, I mean, local government, you typically have, you know, enough trust in the community to know that we're going to handle our business appropriately. So I think either version will work fine. I think you just, I think having the language open enough where it could be the town or a housing authority, combination thereof, or some other version that could be designed later to handle this, I think would all be appropriate.
Yeah. I mean, you know, even the advisory board, which did very well on this, you know, it could also be helpful also. But thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And I do think the, I know that there's been some chatter about kind of re-engaging the task force in terms of because I, I think it would be beneficial after the elements approved, whenever that the board deems that to be approval. Because if, as we move into the next chapter, I mean, you've probably heard me say task force are designed for a task and then they cease. You kind of set them up under one project and that project is complete, the task force dissolves. We still have a number of folks still around from the previous version. Obviously, we lost Mr. Brian Taylor, unfortunately. But I know others that are, that are still involved or might still want to be involved. That now that we've, we have a town ordinance for affordable housing incentives, the town is dedicating money already to affordable housing in its budget this year. And we're, we're soon to have presumably an affordable housing element. I think it would make good sense that once all those are approved to have kind of an implementation task force to see how we, how we, how the rubber meets the road now that, you know, three policies have been defined. I think it makes the most sense to engage those same stakeholders once everything's approved.
I'd like to say, in addition to that, basically, of course, Chatham County has the Affordable Advisory Committee, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And those individuals are certainly able to handle a trust because that's what they do now. So they may be people which can assist or show some direction in reference to this affordable, to this particular trust fund here also. And in addition to that, I had a question about the, the affordable housing for thirty years. They are indicating just rental housing. Is that correct? Or does that include the W? It says specifically on page four, unless I don't have the most recent version. The foregoing rental AHU should continue to be AHU for thirty years, but it doesn't say WHUs. So does that include the WHUs or just the AHUs, rental AHUs?
I'll, I will defer that question to someone at Chatham Park while I reread that with your question in mind. And I would say too, Ms. Baldwin, that's a, that's a great idea too about using the county A hack. Again, if the board chooses not to do a task force, I think, you know, we do have representation at the A hack already. So you can, you can, you know, potentially, I won't say borrow their time, but utilize an already established board to help us with the implementation of these policies as well. So again, may not be necessary for the town to do something. We may work with the A hack on that. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
The only other thing I have is about the recreation. Number sixteen said no recreational park land dedication, but let me say, ask this. Or if we get to a place where there, we're reviewing a plan and then we want a small recreation area, does this prohibit us from asking for that?
I don't think it prohibits you. It says required. I think you could ask for it. I do know that, that one of the things that's a likely scenario for, for the monies that we're setting aside for affordable housing. I see a lot of that money going towards, you know, helping some of these projects pencil. Certainly, we want affordable housing projects to have the same advantage of recreation amenities as a market rate unit would have. I think what this is saying here is that it's, it's not suggesting that a, a project would be devoid of any recreation amenities. It's simply saying that, that when you have the one twenty fifth requirement per unit that affordable housing units don't trigger that standard. And so there should be, there should be recreation with these projects because I believe most of them will likely be combination projects and not, you know, a singular affordable housing across the board. I think a lot of the intent is to have them commingled with market rate units. It's just saying there's no burden to dedicate land with them. But certainly I think the town could, could coordinate and work with Chatham Park or whoever the developer is to try to find some, some greater recreational amenity. And Mr. Chuck Smith with Preston Development and Chatham Park Investors has raised his hand. So he's, I'm hoping he'll provide some clarification to that as well.
Could you unmute Chuck, please?
Yes, sir. First of all, Ms. Baldwin had a few questions, but first related to the recreation, the wording very specifically says land dedication, which is the wording in the public facilities element that deals with the one twenty fifth of an acre land dedication requirement. It's not referring to any play site, playground site, anything like that within the project where the affordable housing is located. It's only the public land park dedication that that's referring to. So does that answer that question? I see you're nodding your head.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. And then secondly, on it's my page. I'm on the edited version on page six, but it's article two, number six. It's talking about the ninety percent of the total dwelling units provided to satisfy the requirements that this element shall remain an AHU or WHU as applicable for thirty years. So but it's not just limited to the affordable. It's also the workforce. So it's saying all but ten percent of these affordable workforce units in Chatham Park would have that thirty year stipulation.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Were there discussion or questions for Chris or Chuck?
Yeah, I have a couple of other comments and edits that I, I sent out to the board not too long before this meeting, but related to this, just to, and I'll just try and run through them, going through the document here. For the first section on definitions, I think we need to add a definition of fair market bin, which, which does appear later in the document, but just added to the definition section. And then add the definition of job center as well, which is referenced later, but is not and then Chuck, I guess if you can describe the the plating that is referred to in article two, section one. And my impression was that was talking about the plating numbers. So we have the limit that you're limited to that there has to be a certain number of affordable housing built by five thousand units, seventy five hundred units as we go along there. And I thought this section was about what counts as five thousand units, seventy five hundred units. So if you, can you just talk about the accessory dwelling definition there?
Yes. So the first point, I want to make sure on the definition that you'd said was referred to later, you're just adding that that be included in the definition section.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I got that. And then secondly, this, that, that C part of the number one you're referring to should not be there after some of the changes were made. You're right that, that except accessory dwelling units was already stated that it counted as a unit anyway. So there's no need to be talking about any further than that. Okay. This language would be struck. Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. I, I do, well, I'm going to skip over section ten right now about the the organization for, for housing. I'll come back to that.
Mr. Schiff, if I may interject while we were on the previous one. So Mr. Smith, are you saying that, that article two, one C is being struck altogether?
Yes.
Okay. One, one and B, excuse me, A and B still there as in form?
Unless Mr. Schiff has another question about that.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Still there.
I'll, I'll say from a staff perspective, A and B both make sense. There's a, there'll be a record on file that, that determines the existence of that. So from an enforceability standpoint and the management standpoint, staff is good with one A and one B.
And if I can try and put some more clarity around that for, for people who haven't been studying this is the table one refers to prior to dwelling units platted in Chatham Park. So prior to five thousand dwelling units being platted, there's a specific number of affordable housing required by type and by income level. And so those definitions there are what define that those five thousand units. And they're, they're not related to affordable housing units or workforce units necessarily. So hopefully that, hopefully that's more clear. And, and I'll say generally about table one also, that, that essentially defines all the percentages and ratios for, for this element. It'll essentially be, it would essentially be the driving factor for this element in terms of what is produced, if it's being produced at the proper percentage and income level and all of those things. And all of those things have to happen in order for Chatham Park investors to build more than five thousand dwelling units, more than seventy five hundred dwelling units. So we have specific checkpoints throughout the construction process that we're guaranteed to get a specific amount of affordable and workforce housing by type. So just wanted to clarify that. For number eleven, that talks about the fiscal year and the ad valorem taxes that we referenced earlier. One, one small typo, it talks about the foregoing section eleven. I believe that's section ten now in this latest element. And then also it talks here for the, the duration, what, what this draft says is that it would be, it would last for thirty years after the last unit has been built. And that's, it's not definable. We're, and we're not a hundred percent guaranteed that the last unit will ever be built. And we can't really define that time period. What I'd like to do there is say that we would do that, we would agree to that for thirty years. And then from the date of this agreement and then reevaluate after that time period. And again, we'd be reevaluated more often than that, I think. But, you know, we're, we are taking a huge stand, I guess, for affordable housing in this that we're committing future boards for a period of time to spend what, what may not sound significant, but two and a half percent is a significant amount of even Chatham Park's taxes on affordable housing. So I, I'd like to set that for thirty years and then reevaluate at that time.
Well, if I could add one just clarification there. I think you're saying after thirty years from passing of this element, but the ad valorem doesn't kick requirement, doesn't start until the fiscal year after the element is approved. So probably use the same language for this duration as I think it says. Commencing with the town's first fiscal year after the fiscal year in which the element is approved, we should probably just repeat that language there.
Yeah, I, I, that's a good question.
So let's, let's talk, can we talk about that a second?
Sure. Yeah, please.
I think both of us would agree, we're not trying, the intent is not trying to limit providing money for affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Which is in essence what you're doing by limiting it to the thirty years possibly, if, for example, only half of the units have been built by that time.
Yeah. I mean, we, the, the boards and previous boards. We, the, the boards and previous boards, uh, you know, to me certainly have. Said that affordable housing is a, a high priority. Um, and you know, we've invested in that in this town's budget. Uh, in this year's budget for the first time, uh, for, for the town. So I think that that is significant. I think that two and a half percent, um, certainly thirty years from now will be really significant. Uh, but I. I, I am somewhat leery of, uh, tying the hands, so to speak, of a future board thirty years from now. Um, there, there's a lot of unknowns at that point and what that would be. And I, and I think that that reeval. It may be reevaluated sooner that the town would like to contribute five percent. Um, or we may realize that, you know, the money coming in is sufficient and we want to change that to one and a half percent. We could certainly do that in the meantime as well. Um, but I think that a, uh, you know, theoretically forced reevaluation of this. Uh, in thirty years from now would, I, I would appreciate, uh. If I was on the board then, and I hope that I'm not, but.
Uh, I'm not gonna comment on that. I would say I would always hope you're on the board. But that's not really the point of the comment. Um, the, uh. I, you know, I think the other thing here too, and we've talked about this. Whether, at least with other elements, we've got this provision in the general provisions of the elements that. All of these elements are, uh, really are open for discussion annually. That was, I know Mister Farrell was concerned about having something in place that just never had the possibility of being re- relooked at. So. I mean, this is one of those items that I think, and, and this one really, all of us see this. I mean, I, I haven't said this yet, yet, but I'm very proud of where this is. I mean, I think we're making a statement here that. I mean, we talk about other, other towns that are college towns with forty percent of the stu- of the people not having a salary basically or an income. It's a totally different conversation than we're doing here. And I think the provision that we're pro- proposing. Uh, uh, is unheard of in North Carolina. Can it be better? It probably, there, I think we're gonna both, both be looking at things that we can improve this because I think we can make it better. But it's all because we're interested in achieving the same goal. So this is one of those things that I think. We're gonna, we're gonna be looking at annually and just figuring out a better way to address the issue. Cause you know, another way, it, thirty years from now. And if we had only provided half of the total units, well, that means you've kept them affordable for that thirty years. The other half come along. You may say, well, let's, let's reduce, even though we're still taking the two and a half percent. Or we're still taking that money. Let's just reduce the, the equipment because we only need to provide it for the other half of the housing stock. But at the same time, you may say by then, I, I mean, we said thirty years. We want to keep this affordable forever and somehow, you know, and figuring that out. So. There's a lot of ways to, to address this and I don't know that when we don't have the first dollar in there right now and we don't have the first unit, that it's. Critical, but, um, but just the fact that we're committed on both sides to come back together to improve this, I, I think will take care of a lot of those. Um, questions. So for right now, uh, I don't know if you'd said thirty or thirty-one or thirty-five, but, um. I think as long as we're allowed to come back and revisit this and try to improve it to, because I think we're both interested in the same end goal on this. But we can get there.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think thirty is good, uh, for that.
In, in commission ship, uh, a couple of comments on that. The, I, I think staff would prefer, um. Again, I, I think, I hope we can all make an assumption that this will be adopted prior to. June thirtieth of this year, being that the next fiscal year will be the one beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. Um, I'm certainly gonna make an assumption with that. Um, I think staff would prefer that we use dates like that. Um, as opposed to four years following something or, um. Because, because again, consider that elements can be amended. And so if, if it's four years from the day of an element is approved, does that kickstart another four years? Does that, um, so I think having something of, you know, that beginning, you know. July first, twenty twenty-two, or July first, twenty twenty-six, or July first, twenty fifty-two. Um, you know, but that'll be thirty years, um, specifying a date in the document. Um, I think would be preferable because it, because then you don't have to chase down, okay, what, what, what minutes was, was that adopted by, you know?
Right.
What date is this? Now, certainly the, the document may have some signatures or, or the like, but, um. Generally, this is not a contract. It's, it's a policy. So, um, you'd have to find the ordinance to chase that down. So. It would be my recommendation on behalf of staff that anytime there's a year that we put a precise date. I'll say I don't care what date it is. I, I do in some respect, um, but I would prefer that we do a July first. Because again, if you, outside of going through some sort of special appropriation or budgeting in the middle of a year. We really work on a July first kind of window. So I, I would advise whatever dates are associated with a July first of any number of year.
I, I, I think that's a great point and, and generally we could go through here and, and make those adjustments. I'm not sure how many other places that occurs, but. So, so eleven would be starting July first, twenty twenty-two, um, and ending. Uh, or, or ending to be reevaluated on, uh, June thirtieth, twenty fifty-two. Uh, twenty.
Yeah.
Yes. Doing math live on Zoom is tricky, but.
I mean, policy writing live on Zoom is tricky.
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Ship, two plus three is five.
Yes, but there's other digits after it.
And I would, I would say too, talking about kind of tying the hands. I, I do not interpret this policy to say that the board has to appropriate or allocate two and a half percent. However, I do interpret to say that if you want Chatham Park to do affordable housing, that you need to appropriate. And allocate at least two and a half percent. So in theory, the board could opt out of. Um, a requirement to Chatham Park by not appropriating two and a half percent. I don't foresee that being the case. Um, certainly that would probably be one of those conversations as Mister Smith referred to is kind of. Uh, you know, reinventing or tweaking the element overall, if we got to that kind of divide. Um, but e- each year, the board will have the opportunity to basically opt in or out. And would need to understand the repercussions of opting in or out to that two and a half percent.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. A- a- as we write this, it's all, it's, it's from two perspectives, from, from the worst case scenario. Uh, from a, you know, deterioration of a relationship and then also from a, uh, you know, best case scenario of, of working together and. And reevaluate it each year. Uh, and we'll certainly be somewhere in between those two extremes, uh, throughout the next sixty years. And so. Um, so that is part, part of what we're trying to do with the language here is kind of, uh. Uh, account for both of those extremes.
Yeah, of course. And, and so I, I felt like it was important for everyone to understand that there technically is a choice. Um, even though it may be a, a loaded choice.
Yeah, great point. Thank you. Um, for, for number sixteen, I think we need to adjust the language. It says right now that they'll be, uh, exempt from, from payment. Uh, and I think technically there will be, uh, rebated for, for payment or, uh. Uh, reimbursed for, for that payment, uh, somewhere to how we do in the U D O. And then also I, I would like to add. Uh, now that we have the affordable housing, uh, policy in the U D O, that we. Use that same table for fee, uh. Fee repayments according to the income level of, of the housing. And so, um, I think it's important that we include it in here because the. Uh, U D O section can, can change at any time, but what we, what we just decided on in terms of. The, uh, affordability of the unit and the associated, uh, development fee rebate. Uh, that, that we would include that, uh, here in sixteen also.
And ask a question to that. I know y'all are still, still working on some things of that, but that, that part of what you are talking about has already been adopted as ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and I, I forget the specifics. I think it's a hundred percent rebate for a thirty percent unit, seventy-five for sixty percent. Um, something, something along those, those lines.
And we understand, we're not trying to get a hundred percent rebate for the. The extreme unit out there that some people would consider not to be affordable. We, we understand your requirements in there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I would, I would offer to that question, ship is, is there a reason to have? Um, num- number sixteen in there at all, or do you just simply, because it, it discusses in nineteen. Um, that Chatham Park may participate in all town Pittsburgh ordinances, regulations that provide incentives for provision of A H U's and W H U's.
Yeah, I, I did discuss this.
Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, who? Um, I, I, I did discuss this with, with Chatham Park and, and I think that. Because this lasts for, this element will, you know, potentially last for fifty, sixty years. Uh, however long this build out takes, I, I do think it's important to have a, a defined incentive in here as well. Uh, and that the town ordinance could change a- at any time. And, uh, so we've certainly agreed to it at this point. We, we don't actually even know if, if it works, but. Um, I, I think that as they go and talk to developers about, uh, you know, building this affordable housing, getting those agreements to do something. You know, over the next six years and, and all those things. I think it's important to include the specifics in here. Um, and then I, I guess my next point about, um. Number nineteen that, that you referenced is that, um, I, I don't have a particular issue with them. You know, taking advantage of, of other things that we come up with to, to the point that it doesn't, uh, double up on what's already in here. They don't obviously get any more, uh, fee rebate, or you know, they don't get a double fee rebate. Um, they don't get additional density as it's defined. So it, it might be a more narrow case of what. What is allowed there because the intent is not to, to double dip. But if, if we come up with a program twenty-five years from now. That, that really makes an impact on affordable housing. Um, I, I don't have an issue with that. Um, but I think they need some, some certainty as, as they go try and accomplish these projects of, of what those incentives would be.
Okay. And, and while we're on number sixteen, I would offer that. On the, on page seven, where it says, and building permit and inspection fees. The town currently works with the county to do building permit and inspections. Um, so I would. I would put that into the last sentence where it says, also if wavable by the town of Pittsburgh, each A H U and W H U provided pursuant to this element. Shall be exempt from school impact fees and sedimentation erosion control permit and inspection fees. That is, that language is basically caveated saying those are county operations, but if they are the town. That the town should or shall exempt those. I would add building and permanent inspection fees to that list, um, and probably also. Change your, change the word exempt per your comment, Mister Ship, to, um, rebate. Cause we, we don't have control whether we could, we couldn't exempt or rebate building inspections or anything associated with that. Cause it's not our, it's not in our purview.
No, that, that's a good catch. Um, I, I just, I just paid the county for one and didn't catch that. So. There, um. And, and just so that, so that everyone is aware that the county does have a policy, uh, for some of those exemptions based on income level. And things that they currently have in place. So, uh, anyone can also take advantage of that, uh, current policy.
Hey, uh, which, which item are you guys referring to? Cause I was remembering that. I think there's language in here that says the county has these programs that they can also take advantage of them, right? I think that's number twenty, talks about no school feelings and. Ad valorem taxes paid to the, to the county.
Y- yes, sir. We were on sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. I couldn't find it.
And so on, for what you're referring to in twenty, I, I had gone back and forth of whether to, to put building, um, inspection fees. In sixteen or twenty, I see twenty as less of a ask, or excuse me, I see sixteen as more of an asking, hey, rebate or exempt these. Depending on which language you want to choose. And twenty is more of a directive to the town to say that we shall work with the county. To basically do the, some of the same things we disagreed to in the element, to, to compel the county to follow suit with that.
Yeah, I get, yeah.
Yep.
And, and those are examples, not an exhaustive list in, in twenty. So. And, and just on, on nineteen, I'm not sure. I was just kind of thinking of the fees. I'm not sure exactly how to word it all, but. You know, no double dipping on, on nineteen, that they'd be eligible for incentives, but not a, a double rebate of fees or not. Um, in increased density over what is allowed in this, uh, element.
Would you be okay if, if they borrow from either? Or is it one or the other? I, I, can you cherry pick? An incentive between the two. Obviously, obviously Chatham Park has to adhere to the element first and foremost. But the element, if it provides an ability to use the incentive packages that we have in, in section seven point two of our ordinance of the U D O. Um, I, I certainly understand the, the premise of, of not having, you know, a double rebate. Um, certainly, I don't think you can re- rebated more money than you paid to start with. We're not gonna pay you to submit plans necessarily. Um, so, uh, at least that's not what I'm reading the room to be at least. Um, a- and so I, I, I think it's, there's probably some language to say whether you could cherry pick that or not, or simply that. You know, element prevails if there's uncertainty or.
I, I guess personally, I, I don't have an issue with using the, the portion, you know, whichever one is more advantageous for that project. For affordable housing. I mean, that, that's what we're trying to do with these incentives is create affordable housing. Um, so, uh, I, I would be okay there if we said the, the most advantageous for creating affordable housing. But only, only one.
Our intent is not to double dip on any of these, but I mean, it's the, using your phrase and. Um, so I think we're both in agreement. It's just the best way to. Put it in writing.
Okay. Um, a- and then, so circling back to number ten that we've, we've discussed a lot already, Chris, I, I do think that's a good. Uh, a good way to handle it is to say the town and, and more broadly define what the town is. Um, and, and then I, I also like the idea of, uh, restarting the, uh, I, I think you call it the. Enablement task force. Uh, so, uh, I, I like that. I mean, affordable housing enablement task force that we would start that. Uh, as soon as possible and, and have them work on how, how we do this, what that entity should look like. Um, if we have to have a nonprofit, I'm not personally in favor of a separate nonprofit for this. Um, if we can accomplish it other ways. Uh, and I, I also do think that it should be, uh, a Pittsburgh centric group like we had in the original affordable housing task force. So, um, I, I personally, for, in terms of this element, I would be in favor. Uh, I, I'm still. Uh, I, I, as I said before, I was the one that pushed on the, the tight timelines for creating these, these entities. Uh, still very much in favor of that tight timeline of, of two years for creation of, of that. Um, but, but I would like to see a, uh, a task force formed to help us best determine what that entity is. And, and also how they can get started quickly on, on these goals, you know, continuing on the goals of. The affordable housing task force. Um, and, and I think what we, what the affordable housing task force had talked about two years ago. Uh, in, in terms of that group continuing on as, as much as possible is, is reasonable too. Um, Chris, you kind of, you know, went over the list of things that are different now and that we have. Uh, the town has allocated budget to affordable housing. Uh, I think for the first time, we have a, uh, incentive ordinance. And a U D O, uh, for, for the first time. Uh, we also have a, a project that, that we'll talk about later here, corporate landing that. Uh, we expect will donate, uh, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars as, as a fee in lieu for affordable housing for, to the town. So, um, that combined with having this additional element, uh, completed as well. Is, uh, A, a lot of progress over the last two years. Um, and, and I think it gives that task force, uh, as you said. A, a very specific objective to work towards, uh, in, in terms of. The, the tools that we have in our toolbox right now and, uh, and how they can move forward with those to enable affordable housing.
Yes, sir. And I, and I would expect that, again, whether we have our own task force kind of, uh, re-energized. Or, you know, the enabling side or using the county A hack, you know, I think we, we would like to have something. A deliverable from, from whomever. By the time that we prepare the, the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. By the time that we prepare the the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So when you go back to section ten and talks up within two years following. The approval, that date basically what I'm using is again, using the fiscal years is let's say by July first, twenty twenty-four, the town's identified that. So, the backdating that, there would be some point either in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. That this, you know, support committee, if you will, has gone through the the three a- approved mechanisms. Be it U D O, simple appropriation of the element. And help the t- town design and devise a way to implement these strategies. Which might include a housing trust, might be the town is running it through the authority of one fifty-seven or some other version of that. Um, to to help this become effective, and so I think, again, having that support committee, whatever you want to call it, and whomever those people are. You know, give them a date in advance of our budget preparation for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which seems like, you know. The next millennium, but it'll be here before we know it, um, uh, you know, I think that's that's a reasonable target and gives us plenty of time to to make sure this gets done well.
I would caution, I would caution not to underestimate. The, uh, difficulties and requirements that will be coming forward in the implementation of the town's ordinance plus. The Chatham Park additional element, uh, it isn't something that you're gonna all be able to. You know, assign as a part-time thing for somebody to watch over, uh, in the town. Or that you're going to have a citizens committee that you expect to do the business of the town, uh, without the authority of the town. Uh, regardless of how you set it up, uh. It's. In the research that, uh, a lot of us did in addressing affordable housing through the task force to begin with. One of the things that became crystal clear was that the failures. That we ran into across the country, by and large, involved, uh, inept administration. Uh, of the affordable housing project itself, and I think we have some, uh, pretty good ideas about. About it, but but my caution is that looking down the road as you build up in the next two to three years. Uh, on this thing to not underestimate, uh, the amount of skill and time and effort. And oversight that's going to be required, uh, to make this work, it's just not going to happen by itself, uh, I mean, it's going to require. Uh, significant amount of management to make this, uh, occur in a way that we we want it to occur, so, uh. That just, uh, I I just throw that in because a lot of the research that was done at the beginning of. Uh, the discussions around affordable housing focused on the various methodologies that were out there, yeah, how to manage and. And and, uh, work with this on a pretty much daily kind of basis, and it turns out that there's, uh. A a lot of models, but again, the failures that that I saw in research were those places that. Mostly underestimated, uh, the requirement, that's all I'm saying, and just because somebody's good at, uh. Well, let's say, one aspect of something, or maybe he has a. Uh, background in planning or whatever it is, doesn't make him a good affordable housing administrator, uh. I- is all I'm, uh, pointing out, it it'd be easy to think that this is easier than it's going to be.
A- a- and Mayor, I I that's a great point, I couldn't agree more, um, you know, the way we're currently structured. You know, things that kind of fall through the cracks and don't fit a department neatly usually fall in my lap.
Yep.
And I am not the person to do it, I I don't I don't have time to properly do it. Um, I I would certainly do my best if it was tasked with me, but I I can't agree more, we would, we would need to make sure that the this, the setup and organization. Has the proper professionals, the number of professionals, the capacity to im- implement this, eventually there will be. Too much money, again, if if we do two and a half percent every year, be too much money sitting aside to have anything but. A a very intentional group of professionals administer in the program, um, otherwise it'll it'll sit idle and and. Be, uh, scrutinized and with ill light, um, year to year.
Yep.
Mister Mayor, I appreciate you, um, bringing the seriousness of that, um, task to the fore. Um, we are taking a big step and it is gonna require a lot of commitment from a lot of different people. And a lot of coordination and collaboration, and, um, I'm excited that we're getting to a point where. We can be a community in North Carolina that has a real affordable housing opportunity and program.
Yes, I'm, I I I just want to congratulate everybody that's worked on bringing this along from. Uh, inception, both the town ordinance and now the Chatham Park additional element, I think enormous progress has been made. And and, uh, it's really heartening, uh, uh, to see the commitment and, uh. Uh, it it just, uh, so important to the future of this town that, uh. Uh, it's a, that we follow through and make sure that. I guess, you know, that we sign off on all this, we get the ordinance passed, and then we. We're reaching agreement with Chatham Park and additional element, and while that task is done, that task has just begun, is I guess the point I'm making.
May, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Um, well, first of all, I think any of us that were on the task force with you agree with you one hundred and one thousand percent. Uh, with what you just said, and I think that was one of the reasons that we were concerned and and. Really, uh, this is offering no suggestion on how to do this, but it was really trying to keep this. Board overseeing this trust fund or this trust. That was as independent as it could possibly be because of of all those problems that you stated. And we had even heard stories of not so much with the county's. Uh, committee or task force, but that when it got into the hands of the politicians after recommendations were made, they could do whatever they wanted to do. And so, the the intent is trying, again, to set up something that is as independent as possible. Um, I know, uh, at least. Um, a s- a year and a half or two years ago, whenever. You were not mayor at the time, but you you went to the board and brought the suggestions of the task force. And one of those suggestions was that the task force would step into this role. At the beginning, not to hold it forever, but to determine some of these early decisions that have to be made. Uh, because it was a good cross-section of, and I hope when I say this, that you and Mister Fioke would still be willing to serve in this role. And this isn't something that would go on forever, but it's just the short term to deal with. How do you put together this thing that then becomes something much more serious as money grows, as responsibilities grow, but it's a pretty. Um, independent group, I'll say, but it's, you know, it includes us, it includes you, so there's, it seems to be fair. That is looking at this, and again, th- this isn't trying to, we aren't, none of us are trying to do this for the next thirty years. We're just trying to set up some of these questions that Mister Ship has brought up or answer some of these. Questions and address some of these issues that Mister Ship's brought up, and I thought that the suggestion that the board already approved. But and when you brought it to them was to use this this group and let that be the starting group, um. So that's, that seemed like a good idea to us, and if, um, we've been concerned about how this is going to remain fair and impartial. And you're right, every year it's only going to get more difficult. Um, to keep this above board and something everybody's proud of, but at the same time. I think the task force was also consistent, and I know Mister Fioke has really been a proponent of this. We aren't trying to do the same old same old, we're not trying to create a housing authority and hire staff and spend all this money on. That engine, we're trying to do some out of the box things, and so. To me, that's a continuation of the thinking of that group, trying to figure out some of those things to get get this started.
Yep, thank you, Chuck. Well, one of the things I would like that group to to propose is a a hard limit on administration costs. That is as low as possible, uh, because I do think that is a danger, I think, I think staff is absolutely, will absolutely be needed. Um, but I think that, you know, just like any good, uh, nonprofit, it it would be, uh, limited to a minimum, uh, expense. For that, um, I I I think this is all good discussion, I I don't know what that means for section ten here in terms of wording. Um, so we can chew on that a little bit, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, other commissioners have additional comments. A- as well, outside of mine.
Well, I've got a suggestion that after I saw this comment at five thirty. Um, came, we really tried to simplify ten as much as possible. And I have a suggested wording, if you'd be willing to listen.
Sure.
So it starts off as ten began with, within two years. After the adoption of this element, the Affordable Housing Task Force previously appointed by the town shall recommend to the town. How to establish a housing trust to administer support and incentivize the development of affordable dwelling units and workforce dwelling units in the town. And then it goes to the language, if it's not done by four years, but it's basically. It's, you know, simplifying it and only a lot, that group is only. Uh, recommending to the town how to establish this trust, how to make it up, how to, you know, get it going, it's not trying to become the trust. Board doing the work of that, um, so that was, again, trying to take your concept, simplify it, give it sort of a finite task as Mister. Kennedy says, and then, um, work on that with the group that we had established before.
I I think that's pretty good, I think, uh, like we said, we obviously, um, un- unfortunately need to replace, um.
Yeah, Brian.
Brian on there, um, but, uh, I I think that. The recommendations that board came up with were good, and and we would obviously need to repol people and and see who's, uh, interested, uh, as there's, there's been some time past.
Most of them are on this phone call right now, it ought to be pretty simple.
Well, I would definitely support, uh, Mayor Nast getting involved. Uh, I I want to hear him.
Maybe we don't need to do that publicly right now, uh, but, um, but I I think that. I I think that's a great simplification of of number ten, um, of 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 how to go forward with that.
Got suggestion as well, I think that that gets this out of a pickle right now.
Yes.
Gives us some time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And borrowing from that, using the same times but applying dates to them.
Yeah.
I would say by July first, twenty twenty-four. And by, um, July first, twenty twenty-six, basically that's two and four years, um. Uh, fat basically rounding up to the to the next fiscal year from where we stand today.
Yeah, uh, agreed, I think we should do a a a scrub of this and and look for that situation in other. In other areas and and clarify what those would be as, you know, after we, or as we adopt this or after we adopt it.
Right, so borrowing from from Mister Smith's language, again, if it said two years, it's it's July first, twenty twenty-four, when it said four years, that's July first, twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
No other changes proposed by us.
John, curious.
Oh, and one other thing that hadn't been mentioned, that, uh, when y'all, I'm sorry, this the la- this was kind of, when y'all were summarizing the changes. One of the changes that Mister Bonnet's had asked for was to reduce that year dist- I mean, that mile distance from Chatham Park. And we reduced that to a half mile, so just to bring that out, because that wasn't mentioned, and that was a request he had specifically made.
And and the quarter mile, thank you. Yeah, this is a marvelous conversation, and, um, I'm I'm truly inspired and, uh, encouraged and heartened. Um, and Chuck, I really appreciate, uh, how deeply you're digging in, um, on on these suggestions. Um. It it really was quite confusing when ad valorem was mentioned. Uh, and so perhaps that language should be modified to discuss rather than ad valorem. Uh, revenues, um, or somehow otherwise make it clear that. Uh, we're not talking about a new imposition of a tax, but be very clear that this is. Revenues that are derived from the district, and Mister Kennedy, I think what I'm hearing you say is that. Staff, perhaps finance staff, would, uh, uh, calculate. Those based on properties within the boundaries of the P D D. And so that's going to be an annual process.
I don't think that's defined about who presents that, um, I think it would, if we need to say that. Chatham Park provides what that is, um, I think one of the the. The challenges as we get to build out is as property turns over, you know, you get to a saturation point, and you know, Chatham Park is not an H O A. Um, and so it's 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 not as cleanly defined as as a simple H O A to say what that is. Um, I do believe that there would be a proper way to associate that. One, one thing I would caution about moving away from the term ad valorem is that you introduce sales tax.
Yeah.
And by bringing in sales tax, you bring in three different sec- articles of sales tax. That would be maybe associated with a village center or something like that, um, so, uh, again, I think that. Um, maybe, maybe we can find a way to 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 make more clear what we mean by ad valorem. But I think we are thinking about property tax.
Yes, your word burden, uh, made it clear, at least in my my current understanding of it. And prior to that, this conversation, that was not at all clear that, um, I I just, I had a total disconnect in my mind between. Uh, the notion of annual ad valorem taxes on real properties in Chatham Park P D D because of my understanding that. The ad valorem tax can't be applied to any particular boundary other than the municipal boundary or the county boundary. Uh, so it really just. That disconnect caused me to simply not comprehend what was being attempted.
Hmm, no, and and I can certainly understand that, I think this is. I will not make it more confusing by trying to explain what a TIF is, but I think it's like, I think it's TIF-like.
Assessment District.
Yeah, I think it's TIF-like in its, um, in its creation.
And 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 so, yeah, and that that was what I was remembering was the discussion of the Special Assessment District and and Chuck. You and your team brought in the the firm that had prior experience with administration of that, and I'm remembering how. Significant and complicated that process is on an annual basis to account for all of those properties. Um, and their values, uh, and assess that that fractional, um. Uh, fee or assessment, so it's not a small task, Mister Kennedy, and, um, I I'm again. Um, kind of concerned about that, but. I gather that you're hearing that concern and that we do need to figure out how that's going to be done. Um.
Yes, sir, I I'm, uh, my nodding does not suggest that it's easy, my nodding suggests that I I agree and. But I do think we we can certainly figure a way out for that.
Okay.
But the fact that we described that it must be done doesn't mean it has to state exactly how it is done.
Correct.
Right, because I I expect the counties is involved in a big way.
Oh, the county's going to have to be involved, we don't do property valuation, so, um, you know, we we contract with Chatham County to do our. Uh, what they call, you know, the reappraisals and the valuations. Um, a- and so on an annual basis, whether it's with a reappraisal or revaluation or, you know, annual. Collection of taxes, that that's done by the county with the contract that we have with the county, so, uh, certainly the county. Whether they like it or not, it's got to be a partner on that to make sure we have accurate information, so, ma- maybe that's thrown in the number twenty as well to help us with that.
Um, Chuck, in Article two, uh, section eight, uh, where, um, the land donation. Uh. Requirements, I guess, are listed, uh, can we add allocation of sewer capacity to that list?
We deal with sewer capacity where it's in here.
In number fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, my 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 great concern here is that, uh, this is the limiting factor. It's the limiting factor on growth, and if I hear from staff that this is adequate. That indeed that, uh, this language will work for the goal of, uh, not having any affordable housing impaired. Uh, ha- not having any affordable housing development impaired by the lack of sewer capacity. Uh, not having any affordable housing development impaired by the lack of sewer capacity. And that uh the sewer capacity will come from Chatham Park's allocation. Then I'm satisfied with it, but I I'm not understanding it that way.
Uh, Commissioner Bonds, I think the way that the staff interprets it is is basically that it's incumbent upon the town to provide the sewer and water uh first and foremost. If the town has capacity issues, um, which is unfortunately not a theoretical thing. Um, that then Chatham Park investors or some other um purveyor of utilities. Would pick up the slack uh of of our lack of capacity. Um, and I I think probably the most. Substantial portion of that section fifteen is simply just saying that it's it's one rate throughout the town and not. Um, you know, varied rates. Um, I take that as the most impactful provision of that section. Um, I think it does introduce some some questions about. You know, again, because the projects will likely be mixed projects, you know, a mixture of market rate and and adjusted rates. Um, you know, be that affordable or workforce. Um, so again, I think it's, I think it's open enough to to allow some. Some maneuvering there, but I think at the same time, the town would would like to be able to commit. Um, to affordable housing projects, and I think that, you know, as we've as we've done with our limited capacity thus far. Would want to, you know, encourage and invest, you know, either in business or in affordable housing uh with with that um. You know, asset, however limited it is. So I'm not sure that it that it compels us to do anything we weren't wouldn't have already done otherwise.
Well, that's that's my point is that the town allocates all sewer capacity. And that we have already uh allocated uh or we intend to allocate all that we have. And um, there is very, very little remaining, and we're working diligently to expand that, but I. I. I am skeptical that there will be affordable housing developed with allocations other than those that are already promised to. The Chatham Park investors. And I'd like assurance. Can anyone assure me that indeed? The allocation will be forthcoming, that, excuse me, the capacity will be forthcoming? That I need not worry about affordable housing not being developed due to a lack of sewer capacity?
I don't think you're asking me whether the you're not asked. Some things I don't control, but but what I do know is that we don't, if if there's no. Capacity, we don't build any kind of house in Chatham Park, much less affordable. So. Um, I mean, we're everything, we're all sort of joined at the hip and this is. I think that provides as much of an incentive for us to make sure we're doing what we can do to. Ensure that there's capacity.
And maybe I was even studying, I I think I cited Section eight and it's actually section.
Yeah, eight was getting into the standards of the land dedicated, uh, but fifteen got more specifically into the sewer.
Section twelve, okay. Now, yeah, uh, then let's let's include something about the word allocation in perhaps Item C of Section eight. I just need that reassurance that indeed if if we're going to talk about potable water and sanitary sewer lines, that we're also. We're not just as assuaging ourselves, oh, well, the pipes are going to be there, so it'll work. That we're indeed intending to have allocation of sewer capacity assigned to that land. Can we, can we do that?
Again, I'm not sure if that is for me.
Yeah, that is, that is directed to.
I think you could probably do it in general. I'm not sure you could do it with a specific piece of land looking forward. I mean. And I'm not sure I'm making the point. I think in general terms. You you might be able to include something that talks about uh uh the sewage allocation uh being available. I'm thinking if if you're trying to tie that down to a prospective piece of land. That might uh be ready for a piece of affordable housing in. Two years or nine years or four years. Uh, that might be more difficult.
Well, I I think, uh, if I may, Mr. Mr. Bonnet, I think what Commissioner Bonds is is going at, if you look at number nine, it talks about the preliminary plan. Basically, where there's a, there's a, you know, I call a pseudo design or an actual design. Um, that basically the property is teed up for development. And so I think Commissioner Bond is asking for, if you're teeing it up for development by, you know, not having wet wetlands and floodplain, you know, having a a boundary adjacent to a public. Publicly dedicated street right of way, having new line, water sewer lines accessible to the property. Either stubbed or via easement where it could access. I think that's part of teeing that up, if I understand your question or comment correctly, Mr. Bonds.
Yes. Precisely.
But when you approve a plan, I mean, when is allocation approved? I mean, again, we're not the ones allocating and for you, for the town, these are, these are not just conceptual plans. These are subdivision plan, site plan that go through your process, and there's. A policy I'll have for the.
That's right. A- and also the San.
So I don't need to, I don't need to state it. I mean, we've already.
And and also the the contract uh between the Chatham Park investors and the town of Pittsburgh regarding the Sanford Forest Main. Uh, grants essentially ownership of sixty five plus percent of of that sewer allocation. To the Chatham Park investors and to the PDD. So um, I I. Maybe I'm being pedantic, but uh I would appreciate the reassurance that there will be no uh. Situation of uh affordable housing not being built. Uh, due to lack of sewer capacity.
Could it, could it work where, you're talking in this section about a land, piece of land being uh. Put forth to build affordable housing on. And if I understand what you're saying is before the town were to accept that. Piece of land for affordable housing, it would have to be assured that it came with sewer capacity.
Thank you.
Is that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
If we follow our um protocols that we've done to date, that the site plan is the stage at which the allocation is granted.
Right.
And we've typically stated that it runs with the entitlement. So, you know, if the entitlement is for eight years or two years or whatever, that that. Um, allocation runs with it. And I would say that um. As Chuck stated, I don't think anything gets built without sewer allocation. So, yeah.
No, that's right. And and nothing gets built without potable water and sanitary sewer lines, uh, unless the board explicitly says we're going to allow a septic field.
Right.
Um, and yet we have that language in here. So let's let's have the language in here that that makes it clear that a land donation does imply or require. An allocation.
Oh, and C, you're, I mean, we're keeping fifteen as is, but in C, you're you're asking that. Look, as an example, have potable water and sanitary sewer lines constructed. Uh, and sewer allocated for these lines or something like that.
Great.
Yeah.
And then that, when the town's reviewing plans, um. You see these lines are there and part of your process is to allocate sewer. And then our number fifteen just gets into more details of that allocation. Okay.
If if I may, on, since we're on number eight, on eight B. Talks about having a boundary, a portion of a boundary that it joins a publicly dedicated right of way. Can we specify that that um section is wide enough to provide vehicular access? Uh, so so we don't end up with a a one foot connection?
Are are you really um thinking we're trying to get a site plan approved in the town with a one foot?
Wait. It just says access. I mean, there there's a guy in Montana who has one by one inch squares that he sells to people to get help tags. So that people have different ways to carve carve up property. So um, I'm just thinking if there's a. A way that we can say that 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 it's that access is wide enough to provide vehicular access to the site, I think that would. Maybe mitigate any suspecting.
I think that a lot of this i- i- in in nine, it says that a proposal for land donation to the housing trust. Uh, shall include a town approved subdivision plan or site plan. So I I think that this, all of this is a. A proposal to that entity that they could accept or not. Um, and and I would also hope that we wouldn't approve a subdivision plan that didn't have adequate access to it. Um, so I I I don't. I would defer to people with more planning experience, but but I think that um that limits a lot of, you know, loopholes that we might not necessarily have to detail here. Uh, because it's got to be an approved site plan. Proposed for submission and certainly that entity would say uh. This land has no access. We're not going to accept it, or, you know, whatever those other edge cases may be.
I I am, uh, I am okay with that, Commissioner Ship. I I appreciate that point and because I I'm usually one who tries to have. I don't think looser language is probably the proper term, but 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 more uh flexibility in in the diction to allow. Uh, better minds to to think about it creatively later. So I'm okay with that.
And I think that's the point of adding the approval requirement to the the plan, not just a sketch. But that it is actually something that meets the town's standards or Chatham Park's standards and obviously both. So it does uh cure many ills.
And with Commissioner Ship's on the board in thirty years and he approves that one foot, I'd say, I told you so in twenty twenty one.
Imagine how long that year is going to be.
As long as you're still the manager, I'll, we'll see, yeah.
Yeah, with. As long as you'll have me.
And and some of us will be back to haunt you too. Hold you.
All right. So uh, back back to the the conversation about the nonprofit organization. Um, Kyle, excuse me, Commissioner Ship, I think that you had had suggested a specific wording. Um, was it, was it simply just to say town of Pittsburgh? I've misplaced that in my notes.
Uh, I think I think that was Chris originally, more more broadly, wherever that talks about the housing trust, that that would be changed to to town. Throughout the document, then uh I I like Chuck's rewording of of ten to to greatly simplify that and and refer to uh as force.
I was trying to take notes, Chuck, when you read that, and I didn't get it. So if you wouldn't mind reading it again.
Yeah, let me, let me pull it up. Um. Yeah, and again, and before I read this, at least the thinking in what I'm getting ready to read. Is that the 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 task force. Job is to then take, for example, the language that Mr. Kennedy threw out, and that's part of how do you establish this trust? Is it part of the town? Is it not? Whatever that is. So this language is intended not to get to that detail and what it. Is saying in the element other than within two years or within the July first or whatever that is. Within two, uh, using that as the date. Um, after the adoption of this element, the Affordable Housing Task Force previously appointed by the town. Shall recommend to the town how to establish a housing trust to administer support and incentivize. The development of affordable dwelling units and workforce dwelling units in the town of Pittsburgh. So. Again, it's not trying to start solving the problem with this language. All it's saying is that group is established to solve the problem and to. Get into whether you're talking about the town or its successor, whatever his language was that he proposed. They would be looking at that and seeing what makes the most sense. If that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be extra clear, then we would strike B, C, D, and.
Exactly.
E, F.
I think you even strike A. I mean, because A is incorporated in that language, so you're, all it is has gotten much simpler with the ten with just that.
Yep.
Um, a third concern is uh some s- in instances where definitions are non-standard. Um, and I won't, I can't go into the details on that, but um, I I believe that um more experienced affordable housing. Experts um can help uh create even more standardization with uh generally recognized terms. Um. Similarly, we need to, uh, I believe we need to harmonize the incentives between this document. And the town ordinance. Um. The density bonus, for example, is is um. It's not imperity. Um, and um. Um. That's uh, that that seems. Seems questionable to me. I mean, for example, the eight units of density. Uh, am I understanding correctly that that would deliver for? If this policy is written, seven point five percent delivers one thousand six hundred and fifty units. And then that would give an additional thirteen thousand two hundred uh conventional units or. Um, higher market rate units of entitlement to the Chatham Park project.
Well, first of all, it has to be located within a certain distance, so I'm not sure that that's possible. Second of all, if you're getting, if if that's the case, and you're getting that many. Units that are affordable for thirty years, I'm not sure why you care how many units are given. All you're getting is additional tax base from increased density. Um, and it's in a, it's in a location that is established. For all the scoring criteria to be the proper units for affordability, really locate for locations. The thinking behind doing this was. With the original comment of trying to identify some locations for affordable units. This was a way to incentivize to the point that they were more likely to be. Located in very close proximity to a store where you could buy food. A school and those sorts of things, and it's right in line with the county's scoring system. So at that point, we started, but. I I'm not sure where the downside is for you. And so if you're going to bring it in consistency with the town, I would say you elevate the towns to have that same kind of locational criteria with the same kind of density, but I think this is a great. When you're look at trying to incentivize this for developers, it's a, to me, it's a. And I I this is, we didn't just come up this out of the blue. We were talking to some uh affordable housing developers in the city of Charleston. Who had no staff associated with it, and the way they were dealing with it was to remove height limitations so they could just get more built, more units within a. An apartment building, for example. So anyway, that was the thinking behind it, but I'm sorry, Mr. Yeko, I stepped on your word.
I I love density. I I love density, and I love it especially if it's serious enough that it's actually walkable and not merely. More compact suburban sprawl. Um. But to move from twenty two thousand units entitled for the PDD to. Thirty five thousand two hundred units. And it sounds like that's just the starting offer because I still very much want to move beyond seven and a half percent. To fifteen percent. And. Uh, then eight units of density for each one of those. Three thousand three hundred units that I would like to see developed through this policy. I mean, I'm I'm just given pause. So it sounds like this is a conversation that we need to continue.
Well.
Conversation that um, one of the things about that level of density and given the location of those units is a key factor in leading to. Uh, mass transit. Uh, that's the kind of targeted locations that transit wants to serve. So it would help in that regard as well.
Well, and also the location uh is important if. Uh, any of the affordable housing builders or people that would be uh interested in uh affordable housing. Uh interested in uh affordable housing utilize tax credit programs. Because tax credit programs have very specific requirements in terms of location and availability uh of certain things.
Yeah, and just to clarify that a little more, the the county scoring system as it as it exists this year Is it it offers bonuses for for those location categories. Um and that is because that is also how uh in Lytech uh federal programs are are scored. So I I think that in terms of the the worst possible case, John, of of density that you're describing, I don't think it's physically possible In that that density bonus of eight is only if you meet uh three of those four conditions. And so if if we were to look uh in Pittsburgh, there You know, there there's only specific locations in town that that could meet uh, you know, two of those locations or three of those locations. The idea is to incentivize specifically that, and then that additional density has to be used within a half mile Of where it was gained also. So it it's not a blanket density credit, and I don't expect we'll see Honestly, a lot of projects that get to that level. Um but I I do agree We went a different way in the in the town, in the current town ordinance for density bonuses. Um and and I think that uh location policy is is probably something we should consider for future edits to that. And because The the location policy was based on specific feedback from uh the affordable housing uh experts from from the county and Um and and from developers as well, but that's that's valuable. So I think I think this and You know, we we didn't mention this at the beginning in the in the list of edits, but um this is one of the edits in this version that I think is pretty Uh impactful and and innovative uh and just will Would physically not be able to uh enable that that worst case density that that you were mentioning.
I think I I think I need to understand it better. Um and uh I've reached the end of the the concerns that I had prepared, but um I was still getting in substantive and detailed comments today. Um and so I would like to Send those to you, Chuck, and the board.
What's one that hasn't been addressed?
Um, well. Uh Commissioner Shipp's, I counted fifteen different items in his, and I I've need to go back through that list and
Well, I think we've addressed those. I'm asking for the one made from
On this meeting, John.
I'm sorry.
I I went through my concerns uh tonight.
Okay.
And is it fair to say that um we understand what edits to make based on those concerns?
I I think so, from we discussed.
I do too.
I I think we would uh certainly be remiss not to talk about uh percentage. So, you know, table one Does refer to um really all the percentages and ratios. Uh most, most of the comments that I've received, I think that we've all received, are about the overall percentage Uh based on some other uh areas near us. Um it so what what's being proposed right now is seven and a half percent overall. Um some of the other ratios that are pre-presented here are ninety percent multifamily, ten percent single family. Um and then also uh the different categories of income. So under sixty percent MFI, fifteen percent will be that. Uh sixty-one to eighty, twenty-five percent, and then eighty to one hundred and twenty or or workforce force at sixty percent. And then also uh I I I think that's it. So tho- those are all guaranteed things that will happen by specific points in the things. Um and really, to me, the the difference in the overall percentage is, you know, what what we heard, I I think especially during our workshop, is that Uh for example, fifteen percent in Chapel Hill is the starting point of negotiations with developers. And um it it's not something that they've achieved uh over the years. And I think similarly with twenty percent Davison and and some of these other locations. It it's not a percentage that they've actually been able to achieve. Um and and I believe all of those cases, they've also been sued over over their policies and and had to refund things and and You know, pay back. So wh- what I think is significant here is that it's it's a number that will work. Um this is Something that that all parties have to agree to. It's something that uh they will, you know, the China Park would agree to, will not sue us over, will not back out. And what is shown on this table will happen. It as you know, the number of Dwelling units that they build will absolutely have this number of affordable units built with it as well. And so I think that is something that that percentage in those other uh towns and municipalities is not publicized in terms of what What they are actually accomplishing in terms of doing that. Um and and that's where I I see this. And from talking with developers For-profit, nonprofit, all of those things. Um and and I know the Channel Park has has done a lot of research on their side as well Of of what the market can actually handle. And I suspect that if the other numbers in in other locations were Uh were published, that that it's, we we would see a very similar number of of actual.
And Kyle, another key component to the table is that it has a delivery schedule. So uh by five thousand units, uh there has to be three hundred and seventy-six Affordable slash workforce housing units. So it is not allowing affordables to Um not perform at the same rate, if you will, as the uh market rate units. Which is a key component, because clearly you don't want to be looking at the end of the project and say, okay, where are the affordables?
And we really haven't talked about this metric, but if you've read what the city of Raleigh's goal is. It's their goal, it's not a requirement, but their goal is to provide five hundred and seventy affordable units per year. And when you compare the populations of Raleigh to Chatham Park, we exceed their goal with this requirement. So I think Mr. Ship was the one that said, this is not a goal. This is something that we are going to be required to do. And we have to do it. We will do it. And you will not see the big, you will not see a bigger advocate for getting this done than us once this is a requirement.
I think that's important that this is a requirement. And the, look, I mean, We did the Affordable Housing Task Force. We looked all over the place. We looked at towns in North Carolina, we have towns in Georgia, we looked In Utah, we looked in Idaho, we looked all over the place. We saw a lot of goals, but we didn't see much Production of units on the ground. Uh and uh you can have a goal of fifty percent And not build a single unit. So uh In a uh, I can't remember the name of the development that we worked on months ago. But we uh settled on a uh, if I remember right, we settled on a uh in lieu of Uh based on seven and a half percent.
I think it was based on eight percent.
Eight, okay.
But that was far fewer units than
Units, yeah.
Relative to twenty-two thousand.
And I think he was also giving some concessions on development standards to help offset that. We We've given no concessions on any development standard. We've only got heightened development standards compared to everybody else. So I I don't even know if that's fair to compare to that.
That's a, that's a fair statement.
Well, um I do have these additional uh Suggestions from other reviewers that I would like to submit to the board and to Mr. Smith by email. And I look forward to bringing this back to a vote. Um and um I would suggest uh December thirteenth For that uh vote.
Well, I'll tell you, I um, this is my last meeting at which I will be participating in votes, and this um item is dear to my heart. And I would like to work through it, and I would like to be able to make a decision tonight if at all possible. And we've had a pretty robust conversation. Chris has been taking notes like crazy. I think he knows what edits um have been identified so far. Um and I would like to make a motion to approve Uh pending, well, with the inclusion of all the edits thus far in the meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been, a motion has been made and seconded by the mayor pro temp. Uh all those in favor, all right, discussion.
We're about to consider approving Language that has not been presented to this board. Edits that are still in the works. And I'm I'm horrified. Commissioner Fioco, with great respect to your efforts And to your deep investment in this issue personally. I'm very sympathetic to your desire to have this Uh finalized tonight. But indeed, we cannot finalize this because the language has not been presented to the public. There are so many edits that we've discussed tonight. I think that it would be inappropriate For this board to approve this document without seeing all of these things compiled. And indeed, I would ask the board for deference to the issues that I have not been able to articulate. They were submitted to me by Stephanie Watkins Cruz By uh Susan Levy, by others who I won't mention. I can mention later in in email, I will. But there are additional definitional problems. I've mentioned already that I would like to see serious work done to harmonize these incentives. Because it just doesn't make sense that These incentives are so much greater than for the rest of town. When the Chatham Park investors, our good partners in this negotiation, have been saying all along That they want the town policy to be the same as Chatham Park's policy.
John, I'm, I I actually reached out to Stephanie and and Susan and lots of others for feedback on this draft, and I and I received it. I'm I'm sure it's the same feedback that you received. Um and I and I think it is uh in important to take that into account, and I'm Uh I I I guess concerned that that you haven't brought more concerns forward uh at this point. Um and and so But what I do understand, there's a lot of edits made this evening uh that we've gone over. I'm I'm comfortable with those edits and with the language. Um I I would say that this is not not our final meeting. Uh we do actually, or or not, uh sorry, rather Commissioner Fioco's and and the mayor's final meeting, we do actually have a special meeting scheduled for December first. Uh for for budget purposes, which uh our previous budget meeting, we did um redo for the name of affordable housing. Um and so we certainly have work to do on the budget that that we have not done yet. But I I think it may be possible for uh town staff and Chatham Park to put together that final document To to move tonight to to ask them to do that and present the final revised language at that meeting for adoption. Uh just so we would all be clear on it. Uh
Thank you. Thank you. I very much appreciate that, Commissioner Ship. I'd like to address your concerns. You say that you're concerned that I haven't presented these 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 problems, when it it felt to me like the policy was being Uh accelerated to such an extent that I didn't have any confidence that my concerns would be addressed. Uh this is why I reached out to the public. And indeed, I think this board has been responsive to the public concerns, and I greatly appreciate that. Um however, there are indeed For sure, some items in this list that came from Stephanie Watkins Cruz that have not been addressed tonight And that I would very much like to have addressed. So I promise that I will be emailing those immediately after this meeting to the board and to Mr. Smith. And I very much appreciate Commissioner Ship, your suggestion that on December one, is that right? That we um have a special meeting with voting allowed. Is that right? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, just just to be clear too, I'll be, I'll be very clear that we have not addressed all the comments that we've received. Uh, you know, we've we certainly received a lot of feedback, and I think we, to your point, we've addressed a lot of those uh in this draft goes a long way towards that, but Um we we certainly have not addressed all of the comments that that we've received. Um But I I think that's, I I think that's how we generally operate, so.
Yeah.
Ship, if I may.
That's why uh we we sit here with votes. We have to synthesize the information and make the best decisions. Um I don't, I think we started this evening with a pretty pretty good document, and I think we've only made it better. Um the other, it it speaks to a lot of work to be done in the future, in the very near future. But I think it's a really solid proposal, and I think it's a unique opportunity for us to establish ourselves as a community that Embraces uh affordable housing and um, you know, stands behind our word and walks the law, because We've got a lot of incentives in here that um Are gonna provide just the type of incentive to get developers in here to build these these units, not the least of which is Habitat. Um and we've been talking with Jerry about doing townhouses, and he's gearing up to be able to do that kind of thing. So Um I do think it's it's ready to go uh with these edits that um ready, and I stand behind my motion at the moment.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there more discussion? None, I would, as for the a ye- yays and nays, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Raise your hand, please. I can't tell. Yes, we have.
Can we have everyone um say their name and say what their um what their motion is?
Well, we already have made the motion. We'll, we'll, we'll record your vote.
Cassie, right now, I have hand raised for Commissioner Fioco.
Okay.
Commissioner Farrell, Commissioner Baldwin, and Commissioner Ship.
Okay, thank you.
All those opposed? Uh when opposed, motion carries for the one.
Mr. Mayor, can I can I make, ask one question?
You may.
Uh Mr. Smith, are you agreeing to all the amendments that were proposed this evening into the language?
I'm agreeing to the, I think I agreed one by one as we went along to the ones, and then suggested, for example, related to number ten. Our language. Um
Correct. I I I just want to make that abundantly clear that that Chatham Park has agreed. Um it's it's their Application petition, so they have agreed to the amendments as discussed this evening, and that will be incorporated into the final language as prepared for the board.
I just think that this is highly inappropriate policymaking to be editing an important document like this that has massive implications for decades to come. And I'm astonished that this board went along with it again, again. Writing Approving an element based on verbal edits Not yet put in writing. I'm I'm just, I'm just astonished. I'm kind of horrified, really.
The uh next item of business is new business number one, preliminary plat- plat for Corbett Landing.
That's me, Teresa Thompson.
Okay, Teresa, go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Nass and members of the board. And I'm gonna share my screen.
Teresa, are you able to share?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
I should be able to. Okay, so let's see. Okay, so, let's see. And. Can you see the full screen or the display setting? Are you able?
The present view is what we see. It, it's okay, we can see.
Sorry, it's on all three of my screens right now. I'm trying to figure out which one it is. Um, well, we have two preliminary plots tonight. So the first one is a request from the Rexford Group to subdivide approximately one hundred ninety-two acres. Located on two parcels into one hundred and fifteen single-family residential lots. The property is located along Old Graham Road, um, north of sixty-four bypass. And this case came before you, um, as a conditional rezoning. So this was approved, this property was approved to R A C Z. And, um, at the time it was called Rexford Landing and it's now called Corbett Landing. So it's the exact same project, um, the names just changed. And attached is the exhibit map that was approved with the conditional rezoning. There are also several conditions approved. Um, with the conditional rezoning and. Number fourteen with, which requires the annexation that has been complete already. The property is considered a satellite annexation into the town. Um, there's several other applicable conditions that have already been met with, um, this preliminary plat. And there's several more that will be met and staff will ensure that they're met. When it is required, um, such as the donation to the town of Pittsboro Affordable Housing Fund. Um, which is required to be paid no later than six months after final plat approval. Your packet includes the preliminary plat. On the screen is the overall subdivision plan. Um, this property will be ter- uh, served by town water and septic systems as the subdivision's not located near sewer. The subdivision has received preliminary plan reviews from all applicable town and county departments and N C D O T. The applicant plans to pay a recreation fee in lieu versus providing public recreation. Um, these plans will be reviewed and approved at the C D level. So right now it's just being submitted to the board as a preliminary plat. Um, so before any construction can begin. The, the C D plans, the construction drawing plans and any other required approvals and permits, local and state level. All of that has to be complete before authorization for construction is approved, um, which staff will ensure that that is done. And there's two motions to consider. The first is the applicant's request. To have a waiver from providing sidewalks on both sides of the street. The ordinance does allow this for the board to consider. If it is shown that local pedestrian traffic warrants it on just the one side of the street. Um, planning board recommended approval of this request. Being that these are lower density, uh, this is a lower density type development. Um, more of a isolated location, not in the central portion of town where interconnectivity is provided. Um, and only serving the residents of the, of the low-density development. And the planning board also recommended approval of the preliminary plat. There were a few questions, logistical questions, utility questions that were answered. And as I've stated, the plans have been reviewed, um, to any applicable standards at this time, including. Uh, utilities, public safety, engineering and planning. Um, therefore staff recommends making a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Corbett Landing. And the applicants are here tonight. If you have any questions for them and please let me know if you have any questions for me also. Thank you.
Any questions for Teresa?
Yeah, one, one cre- question Teresa, and I know this comes up on, uh, both of these this evening about the, uh, waiver for the sidewalk. Uh, it says that we can do it based on the, the traffic and I see in this, there's a, a letter from the engineer. Is that a, um, study that, that's done about pedestrian traffic? Or is that just, uh, based on the location of the development size and things like that?
Um, the language in the ordinance. Says the commissioners may grant exceptions upon recommendation of the planning board. If it's shown that the local pedestrian traffic warrants their location on one side only. Or if it's demonstrated that adverse effects would occur from stormwater runoff, so that it seems to be more discretionary type language.
Okay, and then if we approve that, is that, uh, is there a sidewalk fee in lieu associated? Or is this a, a waiver of that requirement?
Um. I think I would interpret that as just a waiver. Since it's not a requirement, if you are wa- waiving the requirement, there would not be a fee in lieu is my interpretation. But, um, I, I don't think it specifically says one way or the other.
Okay, that, that was my impression. I just wanted to, to double check.
Any other questions or discussion? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for providing sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Then a, uh, motion to approve the preliminary plat would be in order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you, Teresa.
Yes, sir.
Alright, anything else on this item?
No, sir.
Alright, next item is the preliminary plat for Flynn Farm.
Okay, um. John and Denise Materatondo, they're proposing to subdivide approximately forty-eight acres on two parcels of land. And this will be into nineteen single-family, uh, residential lots. And this property is located on sixty-four Business West. It's in the town's E T J. It's located approximately one mile west of town. And this ca- this, uh, case came before the board as well, um, last year for a general use rezoning request. So this, these proper, this property was rezoned to R A. Which allowed the developer to pursue a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. Um, and this also, uh, had a, a name change. It used to be called Flint Farm. Um, and now it has been renamed to Flynn Farm. So in case, uh, there was any confusion there, um, it's also the same project as before. And this subdivision will be served by well and septic systems. Um, as there is no, uh, public water, um, system that's close by. Um, there is a sewer force main that runs along sixty-four Business, though we. The engineering department has contacted the county and, um, it would not be logistically feasible to tap on to that force main. And the subdivision has received preliminary reviews by all applicable town and county departments, including D O T. The applicant also is requesting to pay a recreation fee in lieu versus providing public recreation. Um, the, this was also submitted at the preliminary plat level. So the CDs will have to be approved and all additional, um, local and state approvals and permits. Will have to be done before, um, construction can begin. And the same two motions as the first preliminary plat. This applicant is also requesting, um, a waiver from providing sidewalks on both sides of the street. Uh, the planning board recommended, uh, approval of that, along with approval of the preliminary plat. Um, similar questions were asked at the planning board level, uh, mainly regarding utilities. And, um, please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Teresa or the applicant? Discussion?
Ms. Thompson, uh, I'm, I'm curious to learn a little bit more about that, the sewer force main. Uh, it's not feasible to connect. Can you help me understand that?
Yes, sir, um. There was a lot of discussion back and forth on what the. The purpose of the force main was for, which was the jail and, um. If it would be able to be tied on to, um. And it was eventually determined that it would, it would just be. Logistically difficult to, for that to even be the case, um.
As an engineering challenge or as a matter of policy and ownership?
Uh, engineering and also cost prohibitive.
Commissioner Barnes, I would say both. Generally, you do not tie in to, to force mains. You generally allow them to convey large amounts of sewer. Um, so they have very little, um, uh, connections to them. It also would, um. Carry out the, uh, responsibility of the town on that force main currently, the county. Um, that's their force main. If, if Flynn Farm were to connect, that would take the town's responsibility further out. So I would say it's both of your concerns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions or?
Just one. I'm sorry, Pamela, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Just a clarification about, I think that was rezoning twenty twenty zero four. And that was just for the one, one parcel with the existing house, is that correct? Or, or was that reversed?
So there were two rezoning requests. One was, the, the first one was done for the larger tract of land. And I think there was, um, from what I understand, a miscommunication on what was to be rezoned. So the second one that I brought to the board was for the smaller piece of property, um, to also be rezoned to R A. Because that's, the, the owner thought that that was included in the first request, which it was not.
Okay, that's what I thought I remembered from that time last year. I just wanna clarify.
Yes, sir.
We. We further.
Yes, I do have one question in reference to, um, the property of Lydia Farrell. Which is right next door to the, to the proposed. Re- to their proposed, uh, development. Is there going to be any type of tree buffer? You had the, you had it right there where I wanted it. Any type of tree buffer or anything between those particular property, that property and. Uh, the Lydia Farrell property?
Um, no ma'am, since it's the, the same type of land use category, it's the same level of intensity being single-family residential detached. There is not a required buffer, um, because this property or because this proposal was requested. When the old ordinance was in effect, um, there is a buffer requirement along sixty-four Business. Um, but that's it.
Okay, would they be willing to put one there regardless of whether requirement?
Um, I think the applicant could speak to that if. If they're able.
Is the applicant on? I thought I, it's.
Hello, members of the board. This is John Materatondo and I am, I am the applicant.
Yes, thank you, John.
Uh, yes, I, I understand that concern as far as, um, of creating a little bit of privacy between the, um. Between the existing and the new development, so I would be willing to consider, consider something. There is a lot of growth there right now, honestly. If I stand out on that pasture and look west. You can, you, that, that is pretty, pretty densely vegetated, but. Um, I'd be willing to, to add a little bit to, to cover some of, uh, the neighbors' concerns.
Thank you very much. That would be great. Thank you.
May please specify what that would be.
I'd have to talk to, um, my, my engineer and, uh, a landscape planner and decide what would be, um. What would kind of fit the bill.
So presuming Mr. Materatondo that, that would not occur this evening. Um, I, I think that would, you know, defer to the mayor and the board. I think that would result in pushing this item to the next agenda. Or to, you could discuss that with your, um, team to determine what a proper buffer along that side would be and work with Ms. Thompson and her staff on that.
Yeah, so that, that would push this to the thirteenth.
Or, or whenever Mr. Materatondo, I was saying earlier, no, earlier than the thirteenth.
Right.
Depending on, we could have something back to staff, um, uh, that would be able to go into a packet for the board's consideration.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to interject. Can you hear me?
Yes, is, who, who is this?
Uh, this, my name is Richard Bullock. I'm the surveyor for John.
Okay.
Uh, I would think that to not delay this project, that, you know, looking at the, the lots. That he has here, that we could probably do a forty or fifty foot buffer for landscaping. Uh, to suffice for Ms. Farrell. John, you might have to chime in.
Uh, Richard, explain that a little bit. I, I didn't quite understand.
We're, 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 we're talking about the west line of your tracks. That, uh, a buffer of fifty foot to a landscape to the west. Would probably be no different than what you already have.
Right, by fifty foot, you mean fifty, fifty foot on the north, north-south access. Up towards sixty-four Business. Is that what you mean by fifty foot?
Well, I think we're talking about the west side of your property.
Right.
Uh, and you, you, you don't have any impact there already.
Right, the only, the only impact really would be, uh, the house on that lot, which is really probably about a hundred foot. South of sixty-four Business. So, I, I mean, I'd, I'd be, I'd agree to, uh, add a little bit of privacy screening. Um, along that hundred foot, but definitely not along the whole thing. Because it's not necessary along that whole north-south at west part.
Yes, I, I.
Describe it as.
I just want to, I just want to, to in- inject that. I don't think it's gonna impact your lots.
Right.
Well, I would offer from a staff perspective and a town perspective that we need a precise. Number. And we need, we need to know where that buffer will be located. Absent of something that, of that being resolved momentarily. I, I don't see how the board would approve it. Otherwise, the board would like a buffer there.
Right, so you have to see it in paper, what, what I would, what I would be willing to do. I, I guess that makes sense.
You're, you're certainly entitled the ability to try to describe it. On, on, on this call, uh, this very moment. Um, but again, if it requires further consultation, I, I would, I would advise, um, our board to. To allow you to go back with your team to propose something, um, give you the benefit of time. Work with my staff in the planning department and then bring this back to the board at a, at a, one of our future meetings, uh, once you've had that, uh, rectified.
Sir, may I, uh, interject for a minute?
Who is this?
This is Mike Cicardo. I am the, uh, civil engineer for the project with Timmons Group.
Alright.
Um, yeah, we'd need to talk to John and Richard, uh. If you, if you take a look at the utility plan, we have septic fields within ten feet of the property line. Uh, at the end of Love Lane. Um, Teresa, if you wanna pull that up?
Sure, uh, just give me one second. I'll.
Yeah.
Bring it up.
And so. Down on the other areas. I'd say the, um. The southern half of that lot. You might be able to do, uh. A, 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 a buffer. Twenty-foot buffer, thirty-foot buffer, I'm, I'm not sure. But I just want to point out that there are septic fields. In the northern half of that lot. Just want to point that out.
So again, I'm gonna jump to the conclusion that you gentlemen aren't gonna be able to figure this out this evening. So I, I, again, I would, I would offer that. I think certainly the board provided any other comments on, on the plans that go beyond this buffer. Uh, but if there are no other comments, that you go back. Design a buffer, propose that and come back to the board at a future meeting to have. to have preliminary plat um, and the overall project approved at this stage with that inclusion of a buffer.
Janet, sounds good to me.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's what we have to do, then.
Sure, sure, thank you.
But could I just interject, interject just one thing? And this is uh, what I, I, it was my suggestion. What I was simply thinking of was basically in terms of a buffer, as you said, a privacy area for the homes that are already there. And I was only thinking of probably something like cedar trees, a rope, some rows of cedar trees, that's what I was thinking. Because they get extremely large and cedar trees are definitely native to that particular area in Chatham County.
Exactly, ma'am, that's what I was thinking too. More more of just some privacy screening is what I heard your concern as, and.
Yes.
That's what I would be willing to do. I don't think it'll take anything too elaborate, but something that, uh, just like cedar trees, like you mentioned, that grow tall and quickly, I I I would be willing to do that.
All right, thank you.
Just from an organizational standpoint too, could we put them at the beginning of the agenda when they return?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, I think.
That sounds like a good idea.
If it, if it would please the board and the petitioner, I'd be happy to put it on the consent agenda. And if after the board reviews their consent agenda item, you could potentially pull it and have it be the first item of business right after the consent, that way that again, it's, if it's just the buffer and they elaborate on the buffer, it's likely benign enough to go on the consent if the board's okay with that.
Good.
I I would, I would ask that if outside of the buffer, would the board be willing to approve the sidewalk on one side of the street? And basically, if if the board is is consenting to that here, we will incorporate that into the document um, for a consent agenda and make, so when you, if you were to prove it on consent, it would approve these motions right here, as you see on screen, thank you, Teresa.
Was the board uh, agree with that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a waiver from providing sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Motion passes.
And so the the motion to approve the preliminary plat would be on consent agenda at the next meeting.
Okay.
The next regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Yes. Nice, thank you. That takes us to the uh, next item, which is the resolution of Pittsburgh Old Town Board of Commissioners consenting to the disinterment removal and reinterment of graves. Chris, you, you've got this one to talk about or someone else?
It'll be me, because I can't find anybody else to take on this one.
That's what I thought.
Um, this one's, this one's a little quirky. Um, and uh, the background behind this is, uh, I think everyone on on this call, board included, is familiar with Mr. Greg Stafford's Soco project here in downtown. Um, as part of that project, Mr. Stafford has has come across a portion of property technically adjacent to the Soco development um, that is uh, suspected to have graves underneath basically the drive aisle um, where it has been used as kind of an access, an alleyway um, behind the old uh, hospital going into the uh, the the rear of the Soco property. Um, and so Mr. Stafford has um, basically verbally agreed that he would do whatever it takes to to properly disinter those graves. Uh, he's spoken with the Methodist Church um, to accept those, any bodies or any uh, remains that that are in that area. Uh, I think we all could certainly agree that a proper cemetery would be a better spot than under the drive aisle uh, for delivery or dumpster service. Um, I don't think that was the intention when those bodies were laid. Um, I do understand that some of the investigations about the number or the presence has come back somewhat inconclusive. Um, and so really what this item is tonight, and I think Mr. Messick's letter uh, to me summed it up pretty well about kind of the steps needed. Um, first and foremost, we want to talk about the conversation, because prior to Mr. Stafford providing a petition to the town, um, that he wants some assurances that the town's not going to blockade this. Uh, to be clear, the town has no interest in the property, uh, we're not an owner, we're not a former owner. Um, you know, we we've thrown around all the ideas, maybe a quick claim deed, but the town has no interest whatsoever, so a quick claim would just simply be that. Um, and so really what Mr. Stafford wants this resolution to do, one, he he will need our consent at some point to properly disinter them. But he also needs some of the understanding of the town as he approaches the county. Um, uh, currently, the property is is, ownership is listed as the chat, as Chatham County. I'm pretty sure Chatham County does not own it, I'm pretty sure that is just a um, effect of if an owner is unknown on a piece of property, oftentimes Chatham County will be assigned the property owner. And so we believe that to be the case with this. Um, as Mr. 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 Messick said in his letter, um, it it is believed, and I'll quote the name correctly, that it's the descendants of Nathan Stedman. Um, and so uh, certainly there's some, there's some research to be done with regard to that. Um, so if you look at Mr. Messick's letter, there are uh, five uh, basically provisions or conditions, caveats, all the like, um, that would need to be satisfied. Um, and the request for for tonight is basically showing you the letter from Mr. Messick to me, basically providing guidance on the overall policy and the decision here. The resolution that the board would adopt. Um, and then a um, outline, particularly four and five, of what would happen after the resolution is done. So the staff is asking the board to conditionally approve this, um, basically saying that we are good with adopting this resolution if Mr. Stafford has the owner's consent. So you'll see there's, there's blanks for the mayor and clerk and, you know, kind of blanks for the days on here, because it's not really ready to be adopted per se. It's, we can conditionally adopt it, saying we are willing to adopt this resolution if conditions one and two of Mr. Messick's letter can be met. Number three says the town can thereafter consider adoption of the resolution attached here too, which is the resolution I'm referencing. And then after such, uh, is when Mr. Stafford will really kind of uh, you know, make things happen, that he'd have to comply with statute, he would bear all the costs of removal. Um, you know, I'm I'm sure he would do it the most tasteful manner that he could. It's not desirable to have to move graves. Um, DOT is probably most familiar with doing so uh, for major projects. Um, and I know they they dislike doing it as, even as large as they are, so um, I'm sure Mr. Stafford is not uh, relishing this opportunity. But he also, I think, wants to provide these people a proper resting place, it's not in 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 a back alley adjacent to his property with uh, simple bollards barricading it off. I don't think that serves anybody well into the, into the long-term future, so um, the the motion tonight is really just to allow the board to approve it. Basically, Mr. Stafford would have to come back with the petitions um, for this, for asking our consent, again, one and two of Mr. Messick's letter. And then, once all that's satisfied at staff level, then we can ratify everything else. So it's quirky, it's, we will probably never deal with this again. Um, but it's one of the things that is is defined and um, up for your consideration this evening.
Yes, I guess I'm a little confused about exactly what it is you're asking the board to approve.
Well, I get, it's really, again, it's conditional. If 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 Mr. Stafford, and I've, I've gone through my head about eighty-seven times about how to make this as clear as I can.
Okay.
Um, but if Mr. Stafford can fulfill number one, which is um, petition by himself or the pro, or the, consider the property owner.
Okay.
Uh, for the disinterment of the graves and the reemployment. Um, provisions there. He, in that petition, he must talk, he must uh, number two said, should be accompanied by proof of compliance with provisions of general statute sixty-five oh six B concerning the petition's due diligence ascertaining the next of kin and the descendants located in the cemetery, if known, or subject to being ascertained by reasonable search and inquiry, along with a copy of the request required notice of disinterment approved publication of published affidavit. So all that has to happen before the town officially signs the resolution. So the the two options for the board, in my opinion, really are, you can, you can adopt the resolution, and once Mr. Stafford submits his staff, we can have it signed, like, because the resolution's already been adopted. And you feel comfort that the petition that Mr. Stafford submitted has been sufficient.
Right.
Second option, which is uh, hedging your bet a little bit, is to say, we'd like to see that petition, we'd like to see that information before we grant the resolution. And and even with that, I think it would be beneficial to Mr. Stafford to know that the town doesn't have an objection, presuming those, those conditions are met. That, you know, if he's got consent, if he's, if he owns the property, he's gone through the proper notes requirements, you know, determining and ascertaining the descendants of the kin to properly identify them of disinterment, that the board's okay with that, if he goes through that steps. I think it's important to have that understanding from the board and consent of the board before he goes down the proper requirements to do so, only to find out that the board wouldn't support it.
Sure, no, I get that, yeah. And so, yeah, okay, so I I would think that we'd say, I mean, the so we're not we guess we could do it two ways, we could make a motion to approve the uh, resolution contingent upon Mr. Stafford uh, providing the necessary documents and stuff, and certainly one and two of Mr. Messick's letter. Uh, that'd be, I guess, one way to do it.
And and to that end, that that is the first option, being that, let's say the town board says, okay, we conditionally approve this pursuant to that. That if Mr. Stafford comes to me tomorrow with that petition, and Mr. Messick and I comb through it and say, yes, this meets all the requirements.
Then we could go ahead and sign.
Then you can sign it without going back to the board.
Gotcha, okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Kennedy? I guess then we'd need to form a motion, and I think the motion would read something like, or sound something like, uh, motion to uh, uh, approve the uh, resolution for the, uh, let me get this right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You go ahead.
I would say if if there's a motion to approve the resolution contingent upon Mr. Greg Stafford fulfilling the requirements, number one and number two, in uh, Paul Messick's letter to the town dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand one, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
They'll move.
Is there a second? I think Commissioner Fiocco moved, and John, do you second?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is the town of Pittsburgh vendor agreement with Chatham County for low-income household water assistance program. Uh.
That's me, Chris. Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, so this is something that I I I presume that the board will will be unanimous in support for. Um, I I put this on under new business, one, because it was a late addition and without, uh, you know, perhaps proper review from the public.
Right.
Uh, but also to highlight the the things that we try to do to help our customers. Um, certainly, uh, we cannot uh, make, you know, pleasing decisions all the time, sometimes we have to make the tough decisions for the proper operation of the town, particularly with, related to utility systems. Um, but as we all know, with the CARES Act and and other uh, COVID-related funding streams at the federal level, um, one of the things that's come up is the LWAAP, I don't know if there's a proper name for it. Uh, they typically strive to find acronyms that come into an easy name that you can say, but I haven't heard one. So it's the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And what this program does is it allows utilities to opt in, and so us as a water and sewer uh, purveyor, that we're allowed to opt in. Um, monies are provided federally to the state through the Department of Health and Human Services, who then flow money into counties, counties who. Sorry. For some reason, my phone is telling me what time it is. Um, the uh, um, but the county is working as an arm of the state. Um, I have money flowed to them, so for us, it's our Department of Social Services, DSS, here in the county. And these monies are allowed to allow folks who are eligible um, who have their uh, water and wastewater bills uh, potentially paid for through this program. And so the eligibility requirements are basically those within a hundred and fifty percent of the poverty rate. Um, those who are on um, certain programs already are automatically eligible um, for this. And so the town and the county are going to be working jointly um, to uh, provide support to anyone who's struggling to pay their utility bill. Um, so if if you are struggling to pay your utility bill and you come to the town, uh, we can direct you to resources at the county. Um, and and the county has several options for enrollment. Um, those, some of those listed in my, in my memo, um, but there are also, uh, will be resources on the county website. This program is eligible to be effective beginning December first, twenty twenty-one. Um, so hence the late addition to the agenda, but we felt like that we wanted, we didn't want to miss a day of eligibility, so rather than waiting until December thirteenth, I deemed it important enough to to throw on the agenda at the last second, so um, federal guidance does say that that this must be adopted by the board. It's not something that I could have approved on by myself and 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 going forward with. Um, I think it's also good just to bring public recognition to it as well, so uh, long story short with this, um, it's it's to assist those in need um, with water and sewer bill support. Um, and the the town and county, we're working together on on making this happen. Um, we're working out some of the particulars, uh, but the eligibility requirements is all the county's job. And it's incumbent upon both of us to identify um, those who might be potentially eligible and and to point them to the right direction. County will ultimately decide who is eligible and who is not. Um, and then we'll work with the county. Um, one of the 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 notes that you'll see here in the memo, um, or that you may have seen in the memo, is that, you know, there's, there's a lot of uh, conditions and caveats, um, basically saying that, you know, you have to make payment plans available, all the normal things we make available to any old customer. We will do so through this program as well, and so we're willing to do that. We know that there's a, there will likely be a lag uh, once someone's identified, uh, maybe a couple of weeks. Um, but we will move forward and, you know, not charge late fees, not do disconnects, all that stuff. As long as someone's enrolled, we're going to consider the county good for the money. Um, so even though there might be a delay in the county actually paying us, the enrollment will basically suffice as as payment initially, and then we'll handle the the other particulars of getting payment with the county and not with the individual customer, so. Um, I think it's a great opportunity, um, and certainly something that that we're pleased to offer, especially in, you know, the the much discussed utility rate increases that we've had this year.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great, Chris. Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Uh, Jay Farrell, uh, seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, great. And then the last item is the uh, town of Pittsburgh cost share for City of Sanford Water Treatment Plan Expansion Design Costs.
Yes, sir, that's me again, Mr. Mayor. Um, th- this one is, um, as we've, we've talked about utilities, um, you know, over the last few years and 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 trying to find projects uh, for the town, um, as I've stated uh, numerous times in my tenure here, that we're really looking for generational capacities. Um, you know, it's much discussed of, okay, we have that one project, what what's after that? Um, and so as we continually look for those generational capacity building initiatives and projects, um, in that conversation is our conversations that we've had and discussions with the City of Sanford. Um, as the board member called, the the town of Pittsburgh and the City of Sanford have pretty much informed what we call the the uh, Pittsburgh and Sanford Utility Alliance. We are working with Freezing Nichols on how how we can better coordinate. We're working on a waterline project um, involving Sanford, we've actually included Chatham County now in that effort. Um, uh, to that end, the, I don't know if the board saw it, it's in my, it's going to be my weekly update to the board, but with the. Uh, to that end, the, I don't know if the board saw it, it's in my, it's gonna be my weekly update to the board, but with the, the state-approved budget, the City of Sanford has a appropriation of thirty-four million dollars. Uh, we are a little over eight million dollars of that, um, and for a water line to come from Sanford. Um, so part of that goes to the plant that we're discussing here. Uh, part of that goes to a water line that's gonna connect, uh, Sanford to the tip mega site and then from the tip mega site to Pittsboro. So, out of that thirty-four million dollars, that, if I recall correctly, it's about eight point, eight point four million dollars. It's in the state budget that's been approved. Um, for reference, if you look at the budget, that's on page three thirteen. But the, um, so we're working on a lot of initiatives. Obviously, the, the Sanford Forest main i- has been much discussed on, on the wastewater side. But as we, as we look holistically, when, it's particularly going back to the water line, when you put a water line in, you must have capacity. And as Sanford has been looking at the expansion of their plant, they currently have a twelve MGD plant. They're looking to expand it to either twenty-four or thirty million gallons per day. So, they're looking at eighteen million gallon expansion. The, in utility projects, the economy of scale, um, is actually rather, um, impressive. Uh, the more you can add on, the, the cost difference between eighteen million gallons and twelve million gallons is, is actually not all that much when you look at a per gallon basis. Um, so Sanford is gonna move forward with a eighteen million gallon per day expansion to their water plant. Included in this project are a number of partners. Obviously Sanford's working with us, um, but not just us. They're also working with Chatham County. They're working with the Town of Fuquay Varina and the Town of Holly Springs. This item we have for us tonight is simply just for the design work of that plant expansion. So, when you're talking about a plant that's in the hundreds of millions of dollars, the design work is rather expensive. Out of the eighteen million gallons, all the, the costs to date have been prorated based upon someone's expected demand. So, when you look at the eighteen MGD that's being proposed, four MGD is proposed to come to folks in Chatham County. Three point zero to us and one point zero to the county of Chatham. Um, and so, their, their cost is approximately, you know, one quarter of ours. So, they're looking at about a six hundred thousand dollar um, or so, uh, design cost. As we, as we discussed many times with the, the Fast Track GAC project and other advanced water treatment projects, our, our cash is certainly dwindling. We've, we've had to burden, you know, our ratepayers, our retained earnings balance with trying to improve our water quality. Um, we see that the Sanford project not only is a capacity building, uh, uh, project, but also a water quality improvement uh, project as well. Um, and so, we need, I, it's my opinion that we need to do this project. I think this is a once in a, a one-time opportunity. There is a, a part of me in, that says, we can't afford it, so we can't do it. But I don't, I don't think it's that simple. Um, I do think we have partners around us that can help us. And so, understanding where our financial constraints currently are. Um, and actually utilizing, you know, one of the questions that came up with the development agreement with Chatham Park, um, was about reimbursables and what that, what those improvements would be. So, I've looked at the development agreement and, and really looking at past precedent. And if you look at section four point three five of the, of the Chatham Park Development Agreement, that's talking about reimbursements. And so, I've discussed basically enacting or negotiating with Chatham Park based upon that language and development agreement to have them foot this initial bill of the design. There's still more calls to come. There will be calls with actual construction of the plant. I, I can't say that's tomorrow's problem, but in some ways it is tomorrow's problem. I think having our foot in the door, um, since we have, you know, some funding from the state for building the water line itself, we should probably be somewhat invested in, in actually having capacity in Sanford's plant. Um, and us having this one point eight seven eight, uh, and change, commitment to the town, to the city of Sanford will allow us to continue forward in those conversations and make sure that's ours. If we opt out, uh, I can't say for certain, but I would not be shocked if the Town of Holly Springs doesn't show up tomorrow with a check. They will, they will take that capacity, um, or someone from Wake County. I think Fuquay and Holly Springs both would jump at the opportunity to have more capacity in Sanford's plant. Um, again, that's not a threat. That's not a, any other tactic. It's just information and my understanding of the situation. Sanford needs to get going on this. Obviously, it's an expensive project. It's, um, I think fourteen, fifteen million dollars or so to, to, to do the projects for the design. And so, what they're looking for is a commitment from the town, uh, to basically sign an interlocal agreement saying that we're in for the design. We can always opt out later, and it's an expensive opt-out because one point eight, almost one point nine million is not an easy, you know, fact-finding, uh, you know, adventure at that cost. But it does keep us, keep us moving along with this project. And we are hopeful that there are other projects moving that will help pay for a part of that plant expansion. We're gonna be trying to leverage all the SRF funding we can, um, other revenue sources that we can find from, from the water side. There's more money than ever on the federal side, um, for these types of things. So, the request from, from the board this evening that I'm seeking is, when are you interested in this project? Um, if you are, I do believe that, that our most expedient route is working with Chatham Park, allowing me to utilize section four point three five of the development agreement to work with a reimbursable arrangement with Chatham Park. Um, that they would get paid back through vouchers or other fees, uh, relief. And that we would proceed forward and I could, I could confidently and with a straight face tell my counterpart, uh, Hal in Sanford, that yes, we are in and we, we will work with a interlocal agreement for three MGD in your plant expansion.
Questions? Seems to me that means something that we almost have to do.
Well, and I had the email exchange with Chris, the board that shared on that about the, um, request to use this opportunity as a way to secure additional capacity from a sewer perspective. Given the IBT issue, interbasin transfer issue that this water line poses to, um, provide relief for.
Fix, yeah.
And the cost, I think, to get the additional gallons down to Sanford is miniscule or one hundredth of a, of the original cost of getting that, that, those gallons down there. So, uh, if we can leverage this, um, Chris, you said you had conversations with, uh, Sanford about that. If this helps reinforce that, uh, allocation, I, I, I agree that it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, a- and I, I think I, I can, I can speak on behalf of Sanford and know that it would go a long way to show that, that we are committed to, to these projects and continue to work with them. They have capacities. They have increasing capacities, both on the water and sewer side. And for the first time in a while, they have competing interests. You know, Wake County hasn't jumped the border previously. It's always, you know, Pittsburgh has had a little bit of a, you know, uncompetitive or in competitive route, um, for some of that allocation. And now that, uh, Holly Springs and Fuquay, they went through a kind of a PER, trying to determine if they could do their own water plant. And it, they didn't have enough resources to do so, not in terms of dollars. They had, they have the money. They don't have the water source to provide their own potable water to their growth. So, that demand is, is gonna get pushed to Sanford. And so, I think the more that we can keep our foot in the door and, and I agree on the IBT. I floated that idea with Sanford about saying, hey, if, you know, we've already got two MGD of sewer scheduled to flow. It's behind schedule, but it's still, you know, gonna happen as far as I'm concerned. If we bring three MGD of water up, well, then we can now go to five for sewer capacity. And that'll be, that'll be much needed relief.
Yep.
And, and this, this dollar amount for one point eight, almost one point nine million is still likely cheaper than going after an IBT. Those are not cheap to go after with, uh, when you factor in other types of potential litigation, engineering, all those things. So, um, I, I think there's a lot of good reasons. Um, but certainly, I, I understand any, uh, pause or hesitation the board may have. It's a lot of money to commit. But again, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna run into these decisions more frequently than not. And a- as I've told Sanford, I wanna say yes until I absolutely cannot say yes. That if they will allow me to be in the conversation, I will say yes to the very extent of my ability I can do so. And that's what I've done so far to get us this far. And now I'm at the point where they need an answer sooner than not. And I, I'm, I'm asking this board's, uh, uh, opinion or, or support to say, Chris, you can continue to say yes, or Chris, you've said yes on this way. It's, we, we love seeing this, but we can't say yes to this. And so, you're gonna have to say no and we'll have to find another way around. And we'll make it work either way, but I do think this is a, this is a one-time shot, because I do think it will be absorbed elsewhere if, if we have to say no.
I can support it.
Yeah, I think we have to do it. Um, and, and I appreciate your, your, your focus on the term, the, the generational capacity. Um, that, that's obviously been lacking in, in the past. And, and I think we've gotta make some, some leaps ahead to catch up with what we need today, obviously, and, and what we know is on the way, so.
Does, does anybody object to Chris moving forward?
Well, I'm okay with it. I think it's a, a well-needed option here.
Chris, sounds to me like you gotta go ahead.
Okay, so what I will, what I will do is I'll prepare a letter, um, uh, to Al Hagwer, who's the, um, Sanford City Manager, let him know that Town of Pittsboro will be, good to participate in the design of their, uh, water treatment plant expansion uh, for three, for the, basically the, the portion of three MGD.
Right.
Um, and that we, I will also put in that letter that, um, we were, were formally requesting three MGD of sewer capacity. We'll see what they come back with there. And then I'll work with our, um, our, our folks at, at Chatham Park Investors and work on the particulars of our reimbursement agreement and have that drafted, um, for our consideration so we can move forward.
Super.
I do have just one quick question, if I could, Chris.
Of course, yes, ma'am.
Oh boy, back when this was about the, uh, line going to Sanford, was this part of the original agreement that they mentioned we would have to pay for the design cost in that amount? And that's, it's been a while since we initially started this process. I, it's not that I disagree with it, but I'm just trying to see if that was part of the original negotiations back then.
I, I, I would say, yes, it was maybe not so forward, um, a- of, as a request. Because the, the options are, if, if there's no competition for that demand and capacity.
Yeah.
Then we could become a customer of Sanford. And I think that was, for, for the longest time, really what was envisioned, that, that Pittsburgh, worst-case scenario could pay, you know, maybe a premium on water and, and get water delivered to us. The, what has shifted in some of the discussions is now there's demand for the entire plant capacity. And people wanna be owners in that plant capacity. Um, and so, when you look at the eighteen, if I recall correctly, I believe the numbers, I think Fuquay's taken six. Sanford's taken six, or they're taking six or four. I think they're, I think they're floating. Uh, Holly Springs, you're taking two or four. We're taking three and the county's taking one. And so, some of that math adds up to eighteen and it should. Um, a- and so, before, again, we thought, worst-case scenario, if we can't afford it, we'll just be a customer and maybe pay a premium of a, you know, a user rate. Well, now, ownership's being divvied out and, and there's enough demand to take up ownership. So, that's why this is a little more forward of a request than perhaps we would have seen even just a few months ago.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else on that, Chris? You're good to go?
Yes, sir, I've got what I need, I believe, unless anybody has anything else to offer.
Just one quick, uh, can you let us know in your update when you sent that letter?
Of course.
Thanks.
I'll send you a copy of the letter.
Okay, even better.
If that takes us to final board commissioner's comments, uh, Jay, anything?
Um, just one thing, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Oakwood Drive, a couple of residents have, uh, expressed a little concern of what we, where we stand on any kind of, uh, issues they're still having with the speeding. I think one of the neighbors there was confronted by a speeder, which could have turned pretty violent, I understand, but, uh, just more or less trying to find out where we stand with that and, uh, what, what we can do to assist that neighborhood. Any, anything, Chris, on that?
I just wondered, I was waiting to see if that was a question from me or not. Um, I haven't heard anything from, from the folks in Oakwood recently. Not to say that that's, you know, exhaustive of, of that there's nothing else going on. We still have the previous arrangement where the town is willing to put down the, the speed humps. Um, but again, our, our previous speed study suggested that, that speeding is not a, you know, egregious concern.
Wasn't there a low, an issue, oh, that they were raising over? We put the place where we, uh, were collecting the speed data on a curve where people at, naturally had to slow down in order to get around the curve. Otherwise, they were gonna crash anyway. And the allegation was that we stuck the, the, uh, device that captured the speeds in a place that was not representative of the community, because it was around this curve that made people slow down anyway.
Yes, sir, that, that was what was mentioned, but I discussed that with Shorty and we felt good about our results. Um, if it would provide comfort to the board, we can certainly do another study. I mean, we still have the equipment, so we can do another study and uh, provide a location.
Whatever the board thinks. What do you guys think?
Um, Chris, I, but did we, did we make a, uh, solution? The homeowners were to pay for the speed bumps, is that?
Yes, sir.
And did, uh, the gentleman I was talking to had informed me that they could probably get by with two if they was in a proper place. Uh, what was the cost on that?
Uh, I think it was a few thousand dollars. I wanna say it was like four thousand dollars or something like that. I don't have the number in front of me, but um, again, it's, it, it's, it's one of those things where you can't really, I can't, I won't tell you the two won't fix it. But if you're gonna put them down, you know, you can't just put them indiscriminately down. There's, there's a way to do them um, in order to properly do it. We don't feel like there's a speed problems and maybe two will do it. Um, I can certainly talk to Kent and Shorty about that and our staff with Adam on his side. But again, it's our contention that there's not a speed problem based upon the results that we have so far. And that per our traffic calming policy, that the town can request that, an HOA or basically the property owners pay for those improvements. And so, again, I, I don't think it's incumbent upon the entire tax base to pay for something that, that its town doesn't deem it's a speed problem.
Yeah, got you.
Right, I, I mean, I, I see your point there and, uh, also see it on the taxpayer's side too.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I think I've got what I need. I, I'll talk to the, to our guys and our team here. And we'll see if we can find some remedy. I know we've been doing more, um, enforcement in that area. Uh, I've talked to, to our police about that, so, um, I, I, again, I, I, oftentimes I take no news as good news. And so, since I have not heard from anyone, um, um, and, and that's, that's a presumption on my part and not always accurate. Um, but I was, I was, would be, would have anticipated that some of those enforcements that we've done along that area, which includes Oakwood Drive, would have helped remedy some of that. But, um, I'll talk with our team here and, and see if we can do something and nothing else. It highlights the point to make us go back and look at it.
Okay. And, and like everyone said earlier, I would like to thank, uh, the mayor and Commissioner Fiocco for all their hard work over these years. It's been a pleasure with, working with all you guys. It's been a pleasure with, working with all you guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Yeah, um, and that was my impression too, Chris, on, on Oakwood Drive. Uh, we had some pretty substantial react, uh, interaction with, with some people from that community recently. Um, and they said that they would get back to us, um, and I haven't heard anything either. So, uh, Jay, I appreciate that update and, and Chris too. Um, the organizational meeting on December thirteenth, I've heard some different things about it, but I believe that's going to be in person. Is that correct?
So we're trying to figure out how we're gonna do that. Zoom complicates something that requires a little bit of ceremony. Um, it, it certainly, you lose the touch, um, of something, you know, when, when we swore in, you know, Shorty as chief, you know, that, that was a bit complex because, you know, we tried to like stream it, but also have it, um, available. What I anticipate what we were, were doing, we're trying to figure out a location. Um, certainly the boardroom is the easiest thing to defer to. Um, may not be the most aesthetically pleasing room in town, but it, it works and I, I have easy control over on a Monday night. Um, is potentially to have, um, the meeting start, say, four thirty and, and conduct the swearing in. Um, um, or sometime prior to, and then recess and then reconvene at seven. And so if you're here for actual business of, of the Board of Commissioners that you log on at seven o'clock like you normally would for any other Monday night meeting. Um, but if you're interested in seeing, um, swearing in of a new mayor and a new commissioner, then, um, that will be done in person outside of that. So basically we would, uh, my thought was, and again, I haven't floated this by the board yet, and certainly would love your feedback on this, um, is whether we would set an earlier time, conduct the swearing in in person, and then reconvene with that then seated board at seven o'clock and handle our normal business over Zoom.
I, I think that sounds like a good, good option for what we're, we're working with. Um, I would ask that it be closer to six o'clock. Um, I think we're all, uh, by definition, close to town hall. Um, and just makes it easier for work and, and things like that. But I, I think that's, I think that's the best we can do is, is to do that organizational portion, um, in, in person for the ceremony and then, uh, retreat to our respective Zoom rooms for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's important that, uh, it be at a time when people that want to attend to observe that ceremony, the ceremonial aspects of that are able to do so. That's why I think, uh, you know, the after work, I think maybe Kyle's idea of like six o'clock is much better, I think, than something early in the afternoon where people would have to perhaps take off work or whatever in order to attend it. Uh, I mean, there is some ceremony to it that, uh, a- and I mean, traditionally I've been to several of these and traditionally the, uh, the, uh, meeting of the board is called to order. And the first item on the agenda is the, uh, is, is the swearing in of any new members of the Board of Commissioners or the mayor. And then once that swearing in has taken place, uh, the individuals that are leaving, uh, you know, essentially depart. And, uh, then the new board takes over. And when the new board takes over, it seems to me that they would then say, we're in recess until seven o'clock or whatever it is, but, uh, uh, I mean, I mean, I don't see why we would need to invent a- anything out of the unusual, that's unusual, other than the fact that, uh, I, I'm assuming from the conversation here, that we want the regular board meeting to be on Zoom.
Yeah, it, it's, certainly my staff is working on, under the impression that Zoom is the best for the, the regular meeting, um, where we handle the business. Um, uh, not knowing location, i- is five thirty too early or do we need to stick closer to six?
I don't think you want too much. I don't think it makes any difference. I mean, the participants probably would have a better idea what they would like, but, uh, it seems to me that you don't want a huge gap between the swearing in and then the, uh, going into, uh, business, because I think if we, if we met, convened the board and then did the swearing in, made the transfer of power, uh, then the new board could simply, uh, recess the board meeting until whatever time it was that y'all wanted to have it. I would assume something like seven, uh, per usual, if you're gonna Zoom it. But, but that's just a suggestion. I mean, you might want to get with the participants and see, but it, but it seems to me that the first part of it needs to be the old board calling the board into session. And then immediately swearing in the new to take over that, that board situation.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think as long as we do that, we're, I don't know what the other commissioners think, but I think if we do that, we're following number one tradition and number one, something has worked and made pretty good sense over the years.
Yeah, that's been the tradition that I've experienced.
But, but I do think that the, uh, that having it at a time when, uh, particularly the new people that are being sworn in, uh, there might be some people that would like to see that and making it available at a time when they could do that would be useful, I think.
Right.
Right. And that's why I'm wondering, you know, obviously each of the commissioners lives quite close, uh, to the home base.
Right.
Um, you know, presumably it would be here or downtown.
Yeah.
We've called about the courthouse and there were some scheduling issues with that, um, with the old courthouse. Um, a- and so we're still working, um, Cassie and I on that effort about location, but again, if, if someone lives, you know, let's say the ceremony takes fifteen, twenty minutes, you know, I, I think it wouldn't be any problem to get back by seven, but I could seek for everyone who want to attend. So just wondering if there's a, if it's six o'clock or if, if needed, it's five thirty, okay?
Yeah, I think whatever y'all work outside.
Okay.
I, I would think it'd be, be okay. I think it's just a matter of, I think, I don't know, maybe I'm old fashioned, but it just thinks, I think following following the tradition in this kind of thing has some value. And, uh, I mean, the tradition that we've established here in Pittsburgh on how we do things, following that, I think does have some value in terms of the whole community. And then secondly, giving, making sure that people that really want to participate are able to do that. And that I'm talking about loved ones and family, that sort of thing, that might do attend. Uh, and I think if we follow those two principles, we can't go wrong.
Yeah.
I think six o'clock should be good.
Yeah.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Alright.
That's what we're playing for. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. And then, uh, question on the Christmas, Christmas parade too, is registration open for participants for that?
Yes.
Okay. And where do we, on town website?
Uh, I believe it's on town website, is it not?
I'll admit, I haven't looked recently, but.
Okay.
Yes, it's listed on the, the application's on the website.
Okay, great.
We contacted the high school for the marching band and that sort of thing.
Yes.